Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council meeting for this Monday, January twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. We first start off with a special meeting and agenda. And so, Madam Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter has not joined the meeting. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Here.
Councilmember Pearson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
And Mayor Whalen.
Present.
You have a forum?
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd please stand and join me in a brief moment of silence in recognition of our servicemen and women serving this country at moment abroad, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Nation's Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much. Tonight is a special meeting for the exclusive consideration of one or another resolution expressing support for the Clover Park School District Replacement Educational Programs and Operations Levy that comes before the voters on February thirteen, two thousand and twenty four as Proposition One. And the city clerk has provided the city attorney's draft resolutions, both two thousand and twenty four dash zero two and two thousand and twenty four dash zero three. Ms. Walker, if you wanted to provide us a brief overview of your work product before we chat about this, that would be great.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, City Attorney for the City of Lakewood. Before you would be one or the other resolution, and right now, in terms of parliamentary procedure, neither one is in play. A council member would have to make a motion for either of these to be in play. The council is not required to take any position with regard to these resolutions. So you could follow this presentation with no action whatsoever. They've been described for you in the materials. I went over them last week. I would be happy to try and answer any questions. As I've mentioned before, under the law, you as individuals can take a position on an initiative such as this or a proposition such as this. But if you are to take that position on behalf of the City of Lakewood, it must be in the form of the council speaking with one vote, which is why this is coming before you. But as I said, you're not required to do either.
Very good. Any questions of Ms. Walker? Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Walker, has the council taken a stand on this before in previous sessions?
Obviously, not this specific proposition. And I believe they may have with regard to school propositions. I do know that the council has previously taken stands on propositions generally. I'm not aware of there ever being an opposition expressed.
And in my recollection, the purpose of these types of resolution opportunities is for the council to speak as one voice if they're so inclined to express support or opposition for any particular ballot proposition that might come before the citizens or the residents of Lakewood. So we did receive some public testimony on this last week in anticipation of this coming before us today. So it's really open for discussion. We need to have a motion on the floor first, and then we can have some discussions certainly about it. But in the absence of any questions from Ms. Walker, it is ripe for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we have up for discussion.
I have to have a motion on either the one for or against.
For.
It's two thousand and twenty four dash oh two expresses support for the proposition, and it comes first in your materials.
Would that be the one you're making a motion on, Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
So there's a motion that we consider adoption of Resolution two thousand and twenty four dash zero two. Do I have a second?
Second.
Then moved by Deputy Mayor Moss, seconded by Councilmember Laura Sella, that we adopt Resolution two thousand and twenty four dash zero two. Is there further discussion? Councilmember Pearson?
Yeah, we had some great presentations and comments in our previous meeting, and I think that that really highlights some of the need for, you know, this replacement levy. So I recognize all the comments that came in, and I tend to agree with all of those. So there's definitely a need for this, and I also support this, so.
Any further comments or discussion?
There we go.
Councilmember Bell?
I would just concur with Councilmember Pearson that it was a great discussion last, was it, I believe it was last week. I also spoke to my daughter, who attends Clover Park School District, and she attends Harrison Prep. So we talked about it. She thought that this would be something that they could really benefit from. So I like hearing that from the kids itself, so I am in support of this.
Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did a bit of research and some math and other important things that I learned how to do as a graduate of Clover Park High School.
It's always good to have one of two engineers.
Yeah.
Get some math for us.
So I looked, and Google's not the best authority, but I looked to see what the average assessment was for a home in the City of Lakewood, and it's about five hundred and ten thousand dollars, which means at the levy rate on this, it's about twelve hundred dollars per home, which is significant, right? So we need to take that into account and make sure that our residents are getting at least that much value out of it. And as a graduate of Clover Park High School, I appreciated the opportunities to participate in music programs, in theater, in arts, in various clubs and programs at the high school that wouldn't be funded if not for this sort of thing, including our athletics programs. Looking at the dollar values for two thousand and twenty five, it's relatively the same as two thousand and twenty four, so it's not an increase for next year, but it's about a three percent increase each year after that, which is in line with what we've seen in the past. Because of all that, I am in favor of this, and I think it benefits our residents by more than the cost.
Any other voices need to add to the mix? I will just echo the comments and then in the tenor of the comments, I, you know, I have a mixed bag. I had a child that went to Clover Park for pre-K through junior high and two others that went to private school options, and they both loved their different options for different reasons, right? Every child you have is unique and different. But one thing that rings true to me is that vibrant communities support their schools and their children, and children that thrive thrive in communities that support them. And so to me, as a replacement levy that fulfills many of the needs that aren't funded by the basic education dollars that come through the state, you know, if not this opportunity, then what for these kids? Because the student leaders that came and chatted before us talked at some length about the value of the extracurricular activities and programs that they're engaged in. And if those opportunities are not provided at an adequate funding level, then we lose that opportunity to retain those kids in this school district and to provide for the vibrancy of the entire district. So I'm in support of the resolution and hope that our endorsement, if you will, is a vote of confidence for what the district is doing the best we can through a resolution. Mr. Bokey, do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I do. As you know, as many of you know, my wife works for the school district, and a portion of her compensation is based upon the levies. So I've been advised by council to recuse myself from the vote this evening.
Very fair. And I'm sure just for the record, it's clear that Councilmember Pearson's spouse is a leader on the school board as well. So that doesn't require a recusal at all, but I think it's important to put out there. So in the absence of any other thoughts, comments, or statements for the record, all those in favor of adoption of Resolution two thousand and twenty four dash zero two signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution has been adopted. Thank you very much. And because that was the only matter scheduled for consideration at the special meeting tonight, I will now conclude and adjourn the special meeting. We'll now turn to the Lakewood City Council Study Session Agenda for this Monday, January twenty second, two thousand and twenty four. And the items for discussion as listed include the State of Local Public Transportation in Pierce County, along with the two thousand and twenty four Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review Update. So first, we'll start with our friends from Pierce Transit, Alex Mather and Ryan Wheaton, if you want to come on down and join us. Or up at the podium, whatever you'd prefer. We've got a mic for each of you with the, what we call the Study Session Dias, if you will. So yeah, it's a little different configuration, but welcome. I'll let you guys introduce yourselves and your roles with Pierce Transit, and then please proceed.
Okay, good evening. Thank you so much. It's such an honor to be here with you all. My name's Alexandra Mather. I'm the Government Relations Administrator for Pierce Transit, and I am with my colleague, Ryan Wheaton.
Ryan Wheaton, Chief Planning Officer for Pierce Transit.
So we have been going around to all the local jurisdictions in the county or in our public transportation benefit area, just giving an update on Pierce Transit and our services in our jurisdiction. So with that, so a little, you know, there's actually several new faces here since I was here last, so it's really good to see you and connect with you. But who we are, we are the local public transportation provider for Pierce County. Every county across the state has its own local public transportation provider. Not to be confused with Sound Transit, which is the regional transportation authority that serves Snohomish, King, and Pierce County. What we do, it is our job every day to get folks to the places they want to work, live, play, connect with community, and family, and friends, and resources. And we are governed by a federated board made up of different representatives from the jurisdictions across the PTBA. And here we are by the numbers. Our PTAs, two hundred and ninety square miles. We provided five point five million rides last year. This was, these are twenty twenty-two numbers. Now we're in twenty-four. We have thirty-one local bus routes. We provide four services. So you have the bus, which is the forty-foot bus you see straight. You have Para Transit, which is Shuttle, our ADA service. You have Ride Share, which is the post-COVID updated term for van pool. And then a new service that we have been working on since two thousand and sixteen and are now deploying across the system is Micro Transit, which is a, you know, you can think of it as a public Lyft or Uber. And we'll talk more about that in a little bit. And then we have currently eight hundred and seventy-seven employees. And we're really proud to keep a, you know, we have a strong emphasis on deploying as much service as possible. So we're really proud of our, the eighty-eight percent of our budget goes towards delivering service, whether you're supporting it through maintenance or with operators, and then a twelve percent admin staff. So by the numbers continued, we, public transportation benefit areas are authorized by state law to earn raised money via local sales tax, and we are given point nine percent total authority. We have to, each PTBA has to go to its local service area and ask the voters for it to be taxed. And Pierce Transit has asked our voters for up to point six percent taxing authority. So we still have point three that we could utilize in the future, should we think we'd be successful. And we can talk about that more later as well. And then we also have a very strong partnership with Sound Transit that we'll talk about. Pierce County, you know, especially the relationship with Sound Transit and the perception of Sound Transit is strained down in this area. But we like to remind folks of the value that you are getting from Sound Transit, and that is all the express buses going to the airport and up to Seattle. That is all funded by Sound Transit, but operated and maintained by Sound. Wait, did I get that right? Operated by Pierce Transit, funded and maintained by Sound Transit. So that is three hundred plus, you know, really strong family wage jobs for Pierce County. They, again, they support our operations. Tacoma Dome Station is the largest transit hub in the state, and they are a strong funding partner for us in that aspect. And then also in ST three, we had, they allocated sixty million for our high-capacity transit corridor down Pacific Ave that starts down at Spanaway, and then will terminate at the Tacoma Dome Station. And we're really excited about this because our current Route One doesn't connect to TDS. So we're creating, you know, the folks who are coming from, you know, down south or, you know, southeast Pierce County will now have this direct line to this hub that will then allow them to get, you know, down to Thurston or up to King County and the airport. Our vision, of course, is to provide safe, equitable transportation services in everything that we deploy. We know that the transportation industry is, the competition is fierce these days. You know, we're experiencing a transit operator shortage across the country. And then also, you know, CDL candidates in general. It's a vicious competition. So we like to remain as competitive as possible, offering excellent benefits and perks to maintain a committed and diverse workforce. And then, you know, we really are trying to hear what people, we want to meet people where they're at and deliver value to them so that, you know, Pierce Transit is a viable option for their families. So I think that, you know, that's a lot of what the runner is. It's trying to fill a gap that, we can, we'll talk about that more later, but it's filling a needs gap. Pierce Transit has a really strong history of being an environmental steward. It was one of the first agencies in the country back in the eighties to convert to compressed natural gas. And then in two thousand and sixteen, we were, we were awarded, I believe it was two point five million dollars. It was the very first round of the low no bus emissions grant. So we were one of the first transit agencies in the country to start electrifying our fleet. And then, you know, we really, I mean, it is a known thing that a strong, robust public transportation system is a cornerstone of a strong economic development plan. And so really centering transit in an economic development effort, that is one of our strongest goals that we work toward every day. And then, of course, being a very, you know, we see ourselves as a community partner to all of our jurisdictions, and we'll talk more about our partnership with Lakewood, too. And we center equity in all, everything that we do. We have leveraged the county's equity index to inform all of our planning. We also are continuously looking through our services and providing new tools to ensure that the system is as accessible as possible. We just implemented, I believe it was maybe two years ago now, the new Orca Lift Fair, which is a low-income fair. Snohomish and King had both implemented that, and so we were, we were lagging. So we caught up with that finally. And then the Climate Commitment Act provided, it provided dollars for transit agencies across the state to offer youth ride free, the youth ride free incentive. So since we began that program, in two thousand and twenty-three alone, we had, what was it? Is, yeah, seven hundred thousand youth ride frees on our system. So we know that it is an excellent tool. And just thinking about what this does, I mean, as a mom, like, thinking of all the moms who don't have to provide rides to kids getting to their next thing because they can just get on the bus for free, just like, it's just an incredible tool for our families. So we're really excited. And then we also, last session, received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to start a behavioral health, public safety officer co-responder program. So we have public safety officers. What this would do would, we would partner with a behavioral health specialist. They become a team. They're called the Heart Team, Hardship Assistance Response Team, Response Team. And they go out and they assist people who are in crisis on the system. One of the, you know, one of the things we're trying to preserve here is we want to make sure that we're getting people the care they actually need in these situations and not being removed from service. You know, sometimes people have a hardship, and it gets them in trouble. And, you know, we want to, we want to maintain access for as many people as possible. So we are working with UW-T on that. They're gonna, their school of, social services is going to be working to help us develop this program. And then to help implement further the program, we applied for, we were awarded six hundred and eleven thousand from the county's behavioral health taxes. So really exciting to see something like that, the funding all line up and to see the local partnerships going right, creating something that benefits our community directly. And then we have our Community Transportation Advisory Group. This is a, you know, a group of volunteers who are passionate about transit. They are our advisors to our board, and we run new policies and concepts and ideas through them. They're the sounding board, and they are able to advise the board on our policies. And then we are working on a new agreement with the base. It is called a intergovernmental service agreement, and it is a special funding mechanism available to the DOD, particularly Army. And what they're gonna, what it allows them to do is cut through a lot of red tape, and it is gonna, we have an existing runner zone on JBLM, but what it's gonna allow us to do is just expand the zone to cover the entire base. And it will open up service for not only our servicemen and women, but their families. And so this is gonna be a complete game changer for how folks are moving around on the base and their families. So we're really excited about that. We are constantly talking with our local community college network about apprenticeship opportunities, especially mechanics. There's a real, we have a shortage of mechanics, and we need mechanics to keep our vehicles running. Again, I had touched on our expertise in electrification, and we've reached out to, or we've had, we've been approached by other local governments who are also seeing this mandate to electrify their fleets through grant funding. So we're always open to being a partner, thought partner, and an educator if you guys need any assistance on that front. We are, emergency management calls on us often when we need to get folks to respond to a natural disaster. We, we helped move, we helped deliver the emergency responders during the Maui fires. We brought them up to the airport and got them sent off safely. And then we have a Good to Give Social Corporate Responsibility Program, and we select different, it's Pierce Transit employees, and we select different community groups across the PTBA to help support. And Lakewood has been a partner. We have, we adopted a piece of the street across from the Pierce Transit headquarters. And so we've had teams going out and cleaning up that stretch for, it's been quite a few years now. So people, people love doing it, and it's good camaraderie, and, you know, you're seeing the fruits of your labor right away. So, yeah, EFN has also been a long partner for us, for the Northwest Furniture Bank, United Way, et cetera. So if you have any ideas on groups that could benefit from our services, we're always open to hearing about it. And with that, I will pass it on to Ryan.
Thanks, Alex. One of the more important things for us that we don't talk about a lot because it's behind the scenes, but I think is important for Lakewood is us making some pretty significant base modifications. We are essentially out of space. We have purchased some properties adjacent to ours, and we're looking to expand our parking areas for our vehicles. So any given day, you'll see about a hundred and twenty Pierce Transit buses, about the same number of Sound Transit buses. We also have somewhere around a hundred shuttle vehicles that are housed in two different locations. We also have most days about fifty of our two hundred and fifty van pools in for maintenance. And as you can imagine, with those moving around, we end up needing to free up some space. We're also trying to build infrastructure for our zero emission fleet. So currently, we have about six fueling stations or charging stations, and getting those things to collaborate a little bit better with the infrastructure and the service needs that we have has been something we've worked on for the last few years. And we're looking forward to submitting some permits in the next coming years to make some changes that are much needed for us to expand in the future. We were around about the last nine months of two thousand and twenty-three in different jurisdictions, talking about what we're gonna do as we get back up to speed to our pre-COVID service levels. We have been down around the eighty-two percent mark since COVID started, and initially, it was out of concern for people riding the bus. Since about September of two thousand and twenty, though, it has strictly been staffing. As Alex mentioned, we are still struggling to hire operators and mechanics. I can't literally leave this meeting without mentioning that if you know anybody that's interested, they should call two five three five eight one eight thousand, where there is a five thousand dollar signing bonus for any new operator that comes on board, and we teach them how to, how to drive a vehicle, and we get them CDL qualified. But that is, that's a big deal for us, and we're launching the first phase of our system recovery. So Mayor Whalen's on our board. A few months ago, the board approved our system recovery plan. And typically, we would tell folks, we're gonna do Phase One on this date, and subsequent phases are gonna be implemented. We just don't know when. So we have put forward phases that we'd like to bring service back and how we're gonna tailor it a little bit differently for communities. And coming out of COVID, we've seen some travel patterns change quite a bit. We just don't know when, and it's strictly at this point dictated by when we can, when we can provide service and when we have the bodies to actually do it. Another thing on there is high-capacity transit, and I think on the next slide, we'll get into a little bit. You still have that remote? Can you hit that button? For us, high-capacity transit's changed over the years. I'm gonna guess the last time we came here, we talked about our Stream BRT project. What we have encountered over the last couple of years is that there are certain parts of our jurisdiction, certain partners, that aren't quite ready for full-blown BRT. I know I'm about to get this comment, so I will just mention that Mayor Whalen, Mayor Anderson before him, and your city manager, every time we see them, they mention that Lakewood is interested in BRT and is ready for it. So we also like to point out to folks that we're looking to work with good partners. What we've done on the next slide, you'll see, what we've done with our first stream project is we've really scaled it back to fit what the needs are for the community. So working right to left, that's our southern end. Our soon-to-open Spanaway Transit Center is gonna be the southern terminus. And as you can tell from this map, most of the work that we have scaled back is gonna be done in the county section. We're looking for some safety improvements moving north, but the lane treatments, really, we feel like we can get them done in the southern section. And we've scaled back what this is gonna be because we didn't think we'd be able to get funding at the level we needed to get. The cost during COVID, as you're probably familiar with, Public Works costs have just gotten a little bit different than we expected. But we also wanted to put something in place that's gonna benefit people now. So part of our system recovery Phase One is that in March, we're launching really an iterative, iterative project for us. We haven't done this before, but we're launching this project with existing infrastructure, with existing buses, just to get the service out so that we can get something to benefit that community without waiting two or three years. What we're gonna do after that is go back in and do the constructions so that we can really see the full benefit. And we still have a partnership with Sound Transit, and they've got about forty-eight million dollars of funding left for this corridor. But initially, we will put out forty-foot buses that look like regular Pierce Transit buses. We're excited for the project because when people get out, and we've tested this with a number of people around the community, the service works really well. It is likely, other than the Sound Transit Express buses, it is the most car-competitive service that you can get in Pierce County. So end to end, if you were going Spanaway to Tacoma Dome Station, round trip, you'd save about twenty-two minutes a day, and compared to what you'd get on the Route One right now. And for us, that's what we need to get people out of their cars and start making some improvements with our service. Again, we are fully aware that the future of BRT and Stream High Capacity Transit goes through Lakewood. We're working in the middle of this map right now. Down Pacific is where we're gonna do that March service launch. But as you can see, three of the next four high-capacity transit routes for Pierce Transit actually go through the Lakewood Town Center. And I should have noted this earlier. Lakewood Town Center is actually our biggest boarding zone. So every year, for about the last fifteen years, Lakewood Town Center is number one for us in terms of boardings. We have the most service there. We have the most success getting routes tested in and out of Lakewood Town Center. So we're excited about the fact that we can actually turn that into a significant high-capacity transit hub. In the future, we expect that Routes Two, Three, and Four will all be some form of stream, whether that is enhanced bus all the way up to full-blown BRT. We know that three of the total five and three of the next four are gonna go in and out of Lakewood every day.
We often say that all roads lead to Lakewood, so that's a truism here.
You know, we, since we work in Lakewood, You know, we, since we work in Lakewood, we say the same thing.
Yeah, that's right.
Alex mentioned our microtransit or that uh public sector Lyft or Uber. Project that we started many years ago in two thousand sixteen, actually in a partnership with Lyft. We have transitioned this to uh working with a contractor and the hope long term is that we can actually. Provide the service with Pierce Transit employees. In the past, we have worked on areas where there is no transit service. And so uh some of the key ones that you see in front of you. Are the Spanaway Parkland area. That's just to the east of Route One, but really too far for people to walk to service. You see the JBLM Runner as as well as a Spanaway uh zone that is important to us. We're doing something a little bit different now. So we launched in November. Service in Pualap that actually sits over top of some existing service. And this was done for us to test out converting a low ridership route to an on-demand service. So when. We started this in November. In March, we are ending our four twenty-five service. It's been there for about eight years. And we're also gonna do this uh in Mar- March as well. We're gonna launch other services, one that's gonna take place of the the Route thirteen in Tacoma. The route in northeast Tacoma, the sixty-three will go away and will be replaced by Runner. And now we're launching a new service in Gig Harbor that will connect TCC Gig Harbor to the hospital. Uh, which is, those are two locations that. We hear about almost as much as BRT in Lakewood and we're excited that we can, we can do something up there. At what for us is a pretty low cost. We can actually deliver that service. With more span throughout the day, more hours in the day, at about half the cost that we can deliver a forty-foot bus. Ideally, though, in the future, we'd like to see ridership grow to the point where we could bring those services back. Some other significant projects, I don't think, if you've driven around, I probably don't need to tell you that our uh bus shelters are in pretty bad shape. They are improving. I know about this time last year, we did an inventory and sixty percent of all of our shelters, we have about eight or nine hundred shelters. Had at least one pane of missing glass. Many of them had no glass. And that was a compound of factors. One, we couldn't keep up with vandalism. Then we ran into a situation where we just couldn't get glass. So the. The supply was down so low, we were, we were about six months out from getting it. We're starting to get it back now and our board also adopted a new shelter design. So we're gonna implement that with about forty or forty-five shelters coming online in the next few months. And we're hoping that a smaller uh window pane, multi- multiple pane uh glass shelter will actually detour. Vandalism and will be easier for us to get out and replace those panes.
We also were, if Congress can pass the budget, we were awarded an earmark to speed up. Our um bus shelter refurbishment project. We got two point five million. That was Representative Strickland and Senator Murray.
Don't jinx us. We, I mentioned Spanaway Transit Center. We haven't opened up a transit center. In this commuter, in any community in in uh this area for about two decades. So Spanaway Transit Center uh concrete, it was poured. A few weeks ago, we're working out some kinks on finalization of. What that first phase is gonna look like. We'll have about twenty parking stalls, pretty minimal to start. Second phase design is underway and we'll add two hundred stalls to make that a full-blown parking ride. That, as I mentioned, will be the southern terminus for our first stream and also. The headquarters for the the main stop for our Route One, which as it stands now. There is no place for folks to to go off down there other than the Spanaway Walmart. So. That's where our our drivers stop to take their breaks and use a restroom when they need to. And so for us, that is a very long time coming to get a facility down there. We also have uh. Done a considerable amount of work on zero emission fleet. So we did a. A study last year looking at where opportunities exist and we're looking at fueling types and also infrastructure needs for our base. To better understand them when we make those base modifications that I mentioned earlier. We're excited for it because, as Alex mentioned, we've been doing alternative fuels since the mid-eighties. Like in eighty-six. We actually launched uh CNG at Pierce Transit with some converted buses. Most of our fleet now runs on CNG or compressed national gas and it. For us, it's, it's something that we're comfortable with, but it's also. An area that we think that we can help lead this community and also lead the state. And as Alex mentioned. We have been able to help a number of school districts and some other uh private companies work as they transition over to either electric or CNG. We have talked. A lot about what funding looks like for Pierce Transit when we come around to these meetings. Alex again mentioned that we're at point six percent. We like to talk about this just so people understand what it means for us. To get support from not just you, but also your constituents. Uh, Pierce Transit is funded at about half the rate of our local. Uh, partners. So intercity transit's actually above the point nine percent. They're at one point two percent. Kitsap's at one point one percent. As you see here, community transit's also at one point two. Spokane's up to point eight percent. Our partners at Sound Transit, in addition to other uh revenue. Tools that they have, they're at one point four percent sales tax. So we understand that any sales tax presents a burden for your constituents, but we also want folks to know that what they pay for now, they get a pretty good value for. The amount of money that we're receiving. So as you can see, for an agency, well, you don't see it up here. I I'll tell you, because this is one of the things we talk about the office quite a bit. We are about four times larger than intercity transit and their budget is about the same as our budget for local transit. And it's primarily because of the fact that they collect twice as much sales tax as we do. We do make up for as much as we can with our our grant team. So we put out for a lot of grants federally and and state. But uh, we're competing as much as we can and. Last year, we had a end of about a two-year battle with PSRC to get some additional funding for Pierce Transit through an equity formula. And that's a, that's a, I think, a fight that continues to happen. As Mayor Wayland's pointed out for us uh at our meetings. Fair box recovery or the amount that people pay into the fares at Pierce Transit. Hasn't really kept up with the increased cost of doing business. If you look back over the last twenty-eight years, it's been fourteen years since we had a a fare increase at Pierce Transit. And the cost of doing business has gone up about sixty-six percent and we've made no increase in the fares. The previous fourteen years, the cost of doing business went up about fifty percent and Pierce Transit actually raised its fares a hundred percent during that time. So. We've seen fare box recovery or how much money people are paying to get on the bus go down. And it's for a number of reasons, partly because we have more people signing up for Orca. And when you pay with Orca, your employer gets a discounted fare. We also see uh programs for us, uh Orca Lifts, the youth ride free programs. So we're, we're looking at that certainly as as we look at different programs, but we do like to point out to people. You are definitely getting a good value for what you're paying now and we're always looking for ways to. Not just maximize the revenue that we have, but open up lines for revenue in the future. I think that's the last slide.
That, I think that is the last slide. And I have two things I just would like to point out. The first one is we're, you know, if we, if we had more funding, we'd be able to build these high-capacity corridors faster, right? And we are the only major metropolitan area in the state that does not have a BRT network. Spokane has one, Community has one, Vancouver has one. King County has one. We do not have one. So like employers and housing developers, they love BRT because it. Helps them reduce their. Like the price of, they, a lot, a lot of developers for these multifamily um. Structures, they don't have to provide as much parking and it just saves, it helps make the project pencil. So it is an incentive and a magnet. For those resources that we know our communities need so badly and you're seeing it. You know, flock to those areas with BRT. So like, again, back to the economic development, living, living, thriving community piece. You know, investing in transit is an investment for everyone, really. And then also we have a Orca. For multifamily, which is. A developer, and I know you guys have a ton going on in the city and that's why I'm bringing this up, but um developers. They can partner with us on this Orca for multifamily and basically. To help offset the price of parking, they can buy an Orca card and attach it to each unit. If it, if it's located near high-capacity transit or a frequent line. So it's just another incentive for the people living in those units. That's a program we have.
Very good. So if you were to, you know, I'll turn over for questions, but explain the difference a little bit between. What BRT might have provided down the BRT one corridor versus what enhanced bus service is going to be providing in terms of reliability. That kind of thing, just so they get an understanding of the difference or similarities.
That's a good question. I don't wanna downplay the service that's that's going out. So I'll, I'll start by talking about BRT. BRT is really the gold standard for anything that's not a train. Uh, it would have been sixty-foot buses. It would have been fully constructed. Light rail type stations that were gonna be built. And we would have had a decent, about three or four miles of bus-only lanes throughout the fourteen-and-a-half mile corridor. So for us, that's obviously a big deal to get the bus moving, get it out of general purpose traffic. And provide people with, uh, like I said before, a really strong car competitive option. The components that you'll still see for enhanced bus, we're going to implement updated transit signal priority. That's a big deal for us because the system we have now, it's a flip of the switch. When drivers get a chance to use it. It sometimes works, sometimes doesn't. The updated system will be automatic and it'll also sync up with our GTFS feed so that it knows if we need it or not. Based on how we're running with that schedule. So if we're on schedule and we're cruising along, it won't. Hold the light for us. If we're close or running behind and we're close enough to the light, it'll hold it for us, let us get through. And. For us, that adds a a ton for reliability and for keeping things on time. We did downsize to regular stops from stations, but they're going to be enhanced. So a couple of things that people will see that we're excited about, and I think they're gonna see these pretty early this year. We're gonna implement real-time signage at the stations. The big issue for us was. Actually doing the construction to get power, but we found a. A model that we can actually uh power it with using solar. So we're excited about that. We'll get that at the fourteen stops uh throughout the corridor. We're gonna leave Route One alone. That's another big thing to note to people, to get this in in time and to not cause a lot of uh confusion in that corridor. We're leaving Route One alone. People that wanna stop. As many times that thing stops and they wanna do smaller local trips, Route One's a great option. But for commuters in the morning and afternoon, Monday through Friday, if you wanna get from point A to point B. Uh, the enhanced bus service is gonna be a really big deal for folks and allow them to gather their cars and move on.
But the BRT to Lakewood will be. Full meal deal, right?
It'll be as good as you can pay for, sir.
Yeah, right. Councilmember Laura Sella.
Thank you. Uh, and thank you both for presenting. It's good to see what's going on for local transit options. Your budget you presented uh. Was about a hundred and fourteen million for twenty twenty-two and you had about five and a half million riders. So that's like twenty dollars per ride. Is that a typical metric that you try and keep? And how does that compare to your? Other. Transit systems in the, in the region?
So what it doesn't include is the difference between local bus service and our paratransit customers. So. One, we try to keep it down. Uh, I think the issue they're running to is that. I think like the city, we're at the mercy of of some of the costs that that we're seeing kind of get a little bit out of control. Uh, compared to other folks, we're in line with them. I don't think, i- it's a little different. We, we work a lot with Sound Transit, so we, we try not to compare ourselves to them because they're doing a much different service. And community transit, for all intents and purposes, does a different service as well because they do a lot of commuter service in and out of King County. But if you compare us to intercity transit. To Spokane and to uh Kitsap. We feel very comfortable on dollar for dollar what people are getting from us and we. We can find, we can get those numbers and send them over just for reference. But on the local bus uh bus side. Trip-wise, we do hundreds of thousands of trips on. On our paratransit. We do, you know, this year we'll probably do four or five million alone on local transit. But the paratransit budget, it's about a quarter of our entire revenue. So dollar for dollar. You know, we're at, you know, probably four or five times more expensive for paratransit and it's compulsory service that we've gotta lay over top. So. That is one thing that we think about. How, when we're implementing new service. What is the impact gonna be to the budget and how does it work for for both sides? One of the nice things about the runner service is that if we've got that in place and it's available and it's ADA accessible. That we can actually get people off of paratransit if they're interested and and take a more on-demand trip.
Makes sense. It's a critical service to provide.
Yeah, very much so.
Uh, and then you said uh growth since COVID is kind of. Leveled off due to staffing issues is uh. That's, that's true. So we can try and route as many folks to you guys as possible to apply for opportunities.
We will take literally anybody for a conversation that we can. And right now. Industry-wide staffing at the operator, the bus driver level has been very, very difficult. The last few months, we started to see maintenance folks uh. Leave for other, other locations. And Alex mentioned this earlier. There is, there's a lot of recruitment going on between agencies right now, which doesn't help us and ultimately doesn't really help anybody in the industry. But. Yeah, we'll take all references that we can get.
So drivers, maintenance folks, administrative staff.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
And people don't need to have a CDL, like we'll give you your CDL. We'll just, you just need to. Have a good attitude and be on time and want a job.
Perfect.
We'll take care of you.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just two or three questions. The first is. Um, the electrification. Uh, item and you said that there was gonna be more work done. We're also aware that Sound Transit is. For the trains is in the midst of some big electrification thing. And. Lakeview Power and Light, nice people. Um, but small agency and very challenged from the perspective, certainly. Is my understanding in the, in the Sound Transit thing, this is gonna take a lot of work for them. And a lot of money. Um, so this isn't. Question isn't meant as a criticism of Lakeview Power and Light, but it is a concern on our part, right? That when we talk about the comp plan and we talk about utility portion. How is that working? Um, are they gonna have to build new infrastructure? Do they have the ability to, uh, is that holding you back in any way? And then I have other follow-ups.
I know about half this answer, Ryan.
Let's give it a shot, see if we can partner on it.
I, I know that they have been an excellent partner. And as we have needed more capacity, I think, I know that we've upgraded at least one transformer. And then I have heard that they, you know, with our long-range plan and Vision Zero, I. I have heard that they have said they could accommodate it. It is a lot. I understand that. And the Sound Transit thing, actually, I had not heard that. So that's interesting.
They have been a good partner. We would like to stick, I mean, they're right there by the base. So we'd, we'd like to stick with them. We also recognize that PSC and TPU are all in the area. I mean, I think all three are over at the town center. So. If, if there's an area where we need to look at other partnerships. We would do that, but for the time being, they've been able to keep up with, with us looking at the plans, the future. But. Like you said, there are some significant infrastructure improvements that need to be made.
Yeah, it, it's my understanding that the. This isn't official, but the, the, the Sound Transit portion. Is actually may cause them to have to build a new substation. So, I mean, this is. It's a, it's a, it's a big deal, yeah. So and and they're a small agency, right? It's not PSC, it's not TPU. They, so access to capital would. You know, maybe when we have them in, we can ask that question. Um, I, I do wanna follow up. I, 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 I don't think I'm gonna touch on BRT tonight because that seems a little bit more long-range, but. I just want uh some information. How are the, how many Lakewood routes do we have? How are they doing numbers-wise compared to, because I know nationwide, actually, you're eighty percent. Transit nationwide is like at eighty percent, right outside of. Airlines have recovered, driving has recovered and I believe Amtrak has now recovered completely, but transit never has. And and some huge percentage of that is New York. So that's not a fair comparison. But. How are we doing in Lakewood specifically on the routes that we have? And I can't remember all the routes you've mentioned, one or two. I know we have the two-one-two that goes out to um. To um. The, the college. So can, can you, are you prepared tonight? I'm not trying to ambush you, but are you prepared tonight to talk to? How those routes are doing and how do they, how do they fit in your plans?
You would think the planning guy would come here with all those answers. But tonight he did not. So I will, tomorrow I'll send you an update on routes and ridership. Yep.
We just created a beautiful community profile for this area, so we'll send that over.
But overall, we can really briefly can say, so we got down to about sixty percent ridership during the beginning of COVID. And the numbers that you hear typically across the country are primarily train and commuter services. Anybody with the train during COVID, they were decimated by ridership. We never really dipped below sixty because for our folks, they have to ride. They're going to the doctor, they're going to work. We were out doing some volunteer work. Summer uh twenty twenty. Back in the time where we weren't on the bus and we were at transit centers giving away masks to people that. Had no option. back in the time where we weren't on the bus and we were at transit centers giving away masks to people that had no option. And I think that's what you see from our services. For the most part, our people have got to ride the bus. Otherwise, they're walking to work, they're walking to school, they're walking to their medical appointments. That eighty percent mark for us, the eighty-two percent is how much we deliver service. And because we haven't been able to get off that, we haven't been able to make connections for people that are riding two or three buses any better. And that's where we're really hurting people and where they're not riding the bus. Because if you're on a bus and even if the frequency is slower, it's not that big of a deal. Because you know this one time you go out there, you're going to get from point A to point B. The difficulty for folks is that we've really messed up the connection points and there's nothing we can do until we get that service back. So our service, this twenty twenty-three was up a little bit. I don't know that we hit seventy percent last year, but we're continuing to see some rise. We just don't expect that we're going to get back to normal until we can get that service back to where it was.
Councilmember Bill.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, nice to meet both of you. So I had a couple of questions on the pursuing equity in our service. I just wondered if you could expand on that a little bit more. Appreciate what you're doing for language, language access. And I know that transit is so important, especially in our community and to help everybody. So I wanted to know a little bit about the Behavioral Health Response Program, what that would be doing. And then there's something else. You said that you were creating specific projects for such as multiple languages. And I wondered if that was how that was going. And just a props for the youth ride initiative because I think that that's wonderful and I hear it being used quite frequently.
Thank you for your questions. So, so yeah, so the behavioral health is the HART team, the hardship assistance response team. And that's where we have our public safety officer. We, then we would contract with a behavioral health specialist and they would have their own unit that's branded. It's like a vehicle that the operator can, the operator would, you know, if they needed backup or relief, they would, they would call into a service supervisor who would then deploy the HART team. So, you know, so often we, Representative Bernoski was our champion on this because as a first responder, he like could, he knew exactly what we were trying to work on. Like, you know, Representative Bernoski in his day job of being a firefighter has show up to all these incidents where really it would be better met with a behavioral health specialist. So this is, the goal of this is to meet people where they are, get them the service, the acute, you know, the acute care they need in real time, while also relieving our first responders so that they can go take care of the things they're supposed to be doing in their zone of genius. And yeah, so that, that's the concept. Sonoхамеш County did a similar thing. They've seen really great success. So we're really hopeful. We're working with U-Dub right now, hopefully that they have something on the ground in the next quarter or so. I would say. And then like on the specifics, on the, the ADA, I'm going to, I'm going to get a response from our. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll get more details for that and I'll send it over.
Are you asking about projects that we've done or?
Yeah, yes. It just says create specific projects such as multiple language and ADA guidance. So I just, I know that language accents, access is very a high priority in all communities and especially ours. So I was wondering what was being done specifically to address that.
We can talk a little bit about what we've started to do.
Great.
A couple of small things. We haven't done a very good job of getting to communities where English isn't their first language. And we realized every time we do a project, we would try to figure out what are the language, languages do we print this in? And so one of the policies that we started about two years ago was we do an assessment of the area. So impacted area, you know, within a walking distance of whatever service we're working on, whether that is a reduction, an addition, a change in service or a new service. And we have a cut point and I believe it's one point five or two percent. So any language that's spoken at least at that level in that area, we automatically just print it in that. And then we also made sure that, one thing that's been good for us since COVID started is we learned how to do online virtual open houses. And no offense to people that show up to transit open houses, but we don't get that many typically in person. And usually it's the same people. Usually we have more staff than the people there. Open houses online though have been totally different for us. So we, we went from, we would get six or seven people to show up in person for an event that we spent weeks putting together. We regularly get over a hundred people now. We get a lot of engagement. We started to do those in different languages. So depending again on what language is spoken there, we can do an open house where we have breakout rooms with interpreters doing different language and take questions for them. So that's been a big deal for us. On the ADA side, one significant project that ended up being a lot easier than it should, than, well, it was easy enough that we should have done it years ago was we have a CTAG member who is blind. And he pointed out to me one day, I can't tell what zone I'm in when I get to the transit center. And we went down, we took a team down to look at where he told us the most difficult area was, Tenth and Commerce in Tacoma. And he said, Ryan, there's a street running in between these three zones and those three zones. How am I supposed to find which zone I'm going to? So we're kicking off a project in the next couple of months. We expect it to be installed. So we've spent two months figuring out what a Braille sign should look like for us, whether it should be raised letters, what the standards are. They're actually going out later this week to take a look at or test the final prototype. And then our expectation is we will start at Tenth and Commerce, make sure it works. We'll then go to the other transit centers, including Lakewood and Five Twelve Park and Ride. And then ideally, we'll have a Braille and raised letter sign at every single one of our two thousand stops. So those are initial projects and you'll see more as the years go on.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you guys. It's good to see you again. Just out of curiosity, with the homeless and the drug users, how do you convince me to drive your bus with some of the issues that happen? And I am looking at a safety trip there. How can you convince me that, and I'm not going to drive the bus.
I was thinking you already took us up on the offer.
How do you convince me that I would be safe driving your bus and I wouldn't have to deal with that?
As a driver or rider?
At both, actually.
I mean, like speaking from experience, like once you're, like, the bus is actually a very safe mode of transportation. And there is cameras and the operator has, you know, immediate access to first responders should they need it. You know, I mean, we do see these challenges out in our community and it's very real. Most often, these people, you know, people who are facing hardship are not trying to cause harm to others. They are fighting their own challenges.
Explain, you've got security.
We have security. We have our public safety officers who are out in the system.
I can tell you from personal experience, there are times when I'm on the bus and I don't feel safe. I mean, it happens to me on the bus like it happens to me when I'm walking anywhere in the community. So I think things have changed a little bit for us on the bus and they're in line with what we're seeing in the communities. So my hope though is that as a bus rider and as somebody that works for Pierce Transit, we see things and we don't, we don't let things slide like we may have before. We understand that it is, it's top of mind for folks. So the CEO and I were on a bus about three weeks ago going to Seattle. We saw something on the bus. And for us to be on the bus and see it probably adds a little bit different response that typically would. But we have empowered the bus drivers that if you see something unsafe, there is a way for them to communicate with public safety. We have a very, very serious public safety department. And their number one priority is keeping people out of harm. So both customers and drivers. On the drug use side, we don't typically see it, like, has been reported in studies that were done in other locations. With that being said, since COVID started, we have maintained a policy of cleaning and disinfecting buses that we've never done before. We've essentially kept it up at the base, at the level that we were doing during COVID. So we feel like we're addressing it there. Our operators know that if they see things, they can report it. If they feel like they have something that's come up because of the job, they can certainly, you know, get some support there. But ultimately, my hope is that when folks see things on the bus, that they understand that this is bigger than the bus. This is really a societal problem that we're seeing. And same as when people are in Lakewood, that we try to figure out a way to provide some services. Alex didn't mention this, but she actually spearheaded the HART program. And I think for us, that's the biggest thing moving forward, that we're providing support for operators and bus drivers. Because we don't want a cop to have to show up for everything. They have important things going on. And that project gives us some different staffing options to get people help and actually help out our operators.
I, I had an experience, that's why I was asking that question. And as far as the cameras, sometimes the bus driver cannot hear what's going on in the back. So that was my experience because there was an argument starting. But there was a person that was able to deescalate that before it got out of control. So, you know, I don't know what you can do about that, but sometimes a bus driver cannot hear.
You're right.
Just a thought.
Excellent comment because I, as a board member, we went through a fairly exhaustive process to update our strategic plan. And part of the, the plan rollout was, you know, more robust communication and dialogue with the public. Because in order for us to sell the need perhaps for an increase in the sales tax to generate the revenue necessary to increase the service hours and the overall service, we have to make sure that the public is comfortable, that it's reliable, safe, and we'll get folks to where they need to go or want to go, right? And so it's, it's a big, important component. Yeah.
It's a lot of people, a lot of people do travel too.
Yes, Councilmember.
Just one last comment, not a question, but more of a thank you. This summer, we had a number of emergencies in our community, fires, and Pierce Transit stepped up to have services to help our community members get out of harms way. So I wanted to thank you for that.
Councilperson Pearson. So are some of the like Amazon, UPS, or FedEx, are these folks having the same? I mean, it's not a bus, but it's some sort of like, you know, person that drives and provides a service. Are they having the same issues with hiring people or, you know, are they taking people away from, from the public transportation or what?
I don't want to speak for them, but we see them at the same recruiting fairs. So I, I do, I think we're, they're seeing it. It's a little bit different clientele because their folks, they can train them pretty quickly and get them on the road. Our folks are going to come in for a couple of months, get trained, and then the schedules that they get are not traditional schedules when they start. So we don't see folks wash out of training and go to a place like Amazon. Usually they'll go there while they're in the application process. What we see sometimes, not a lot, we'll see people leave for trucking. But the primary issue that we have and people taking our folks is other, other companies or other organizations like ours that used to be our partners and now are sworn enemies on the recruiting trail.
And then, and then you, you had mentioned in the slideshow here about apprenticeship options. And I'm just curious, how successful has that been and who are you partnering with for, for these? Is this, you know, Bates and Pierce calling like?
Alex may know something about that. I know a little bit about it. So we partner with Bates. That's our, our main partner. We also have about twenty-two percent of all of our staff. We have about nine hundred staff members that are either active duty or former active duty. So we have a really good working relationship with JBLM and we pull quite a bit of folks from there as well. But the apprenticeship for us started maybe around two thousand eighteen, nineteen. And I don't want to say it's the lifeline of, of that recruiting because it's a little bit different over there than it is in other areas. But if we didn't have that apprenticeship program, I think that we would be in some significant trouble right now.
Oh, it's great to know that it's working. I appreciate that. Thanks.
Speaking of budgets for technology, we can only have three mics on at once here.
Hey, your mics work, so that's nice.
Yeah, it's, it's a little challenging. Well, we thank you for coming tonight. It's great to see you. And I would normally ask, you know, who your favorite commissioner is, but I, I wouldn't want to prejudice the outcome of that. So, but no, thank you very much for your service in our community and we certainly appreciate the fact that you are hosted here in Lakewood and you provide great jobs and, you know, economic development activity for us here in Lakewood. So we appreciate that as well. Yeah, you're welcome. Yeah, you're great. Good to see you. Yep, take it, take it easy. What we next have, we're going to take just a few minutes of a recess just for Miss Spear's opportunity to get set up. But the next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-four comprehensive plan periodic review update. And so why don't we take three minutes, just a stretch break to allow Miss Spear to kind of get set and then we'll be right back. Right, on the periodic plan review update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and members of council, Tiffany Spear, Longreach Strategic Planning Manager. So tonight, rather than, uh, focus in on a particular substantive topic that's going to be discussed as part of the update, this is really a status report in terms of process and public engagement. Uh, and so I'll walk through information. By all means, stop me if you would like to ask questions, but um, this is really a high level, what you can expect process wise this year. So, uh, one of the major changes in state law and new focuses with this periodic review, which is that every 10 year front to back review of the comprehensive plan was an emphasis and even a requirement for public participation. Uh, it's two pronged under the state statute. It's ensuring that you do it, um, and also provide choices in how to provide it. And that it is early and continuous. And so this is something that Lakewood's been working on now for over a year. Uh, what we've done so far, we've, uh, engaged with four different focus groups, Springbrook Connections, the Affordable Housing Consortium, we've been there twice, uh, made presentations to the Lions Club and the Community Collaboration. There's also been pop-up events at the Clover Park Technical College and the 23 Lakewood Youth Summit. We had a citizen committee convene in early 23 and then they provided specific recommendations about the housing element and the energy and climate change element to the planning commission. And that's now been incorporated. And so when it comes forward for formal review, that will be there. Then we did have our first big open house and it was really focused on housing changes because not only did the 24 comprehensive review require an update, like all of them have historically on the housing element, but there have been those significant state laws that have gone in, in effect in 21, 22, and 23. So the one that says you have to plan for every economic, uh, bracket, if you will, within the city, but also the requirements now to allow multiple units on lots that have been traditionally single family. So we had about 150 people at that open house, which is far more than I've ever seen at an open house for the city of Lakewood. So obviously it garnered a lot of interest. We do now also have two standing steering committees. One is for the overall update to the comprehensive plan and they are reviewing things, uh, and providing feedback to staff. And then that will again be incorporated into what comes to the planning commission and then the council this year. And then we also have a specific subcommittee related to the Tillicum Woodbrook Subarea Plan Update. So both of those committees are working. They've met, uh, two or three times each and will continue to do so this spring. The other thing that of course has happened is, uh, presenting to you and to the planning commission. So since September of 22, which is when we started our, uh, public meeting process, there's been 19 planning commission meetings where something about this process has been discussed. And, uh, council member Pearson is well aware of those. And then we also have had presentations to you, the council, nine times. So this will be the 10th presentation to you. If there's anyone who wants to track those conversations, watch the meetings, download the materials, review them. They are all available at that link you see there, cityoflakewood.us/24periodicreview. The other online public engagement we've had in place now for over a year, we have actually two different websites where people can go. Uh, one is on the city's website itself. So again, cityoflakewood.us/24periodicreview. The other one is called LakewoodWasp speaks.org. And people can actually submit public comments through that portal, which will be incorporated into the public hearing records, uh, later this year. So it's something to try to engage people with. If they're not able to physically be here or be online, the evenings and times of the specific, uh, public hearings that will be held. There's also, uh, a regular update that goes out to people who subscribe by choice. And then we also have had, um, information that's gone on in social media, the city's connections magazine and other things, uh, online. So actually tomorrow night will be our second open house. And so just putting a plug in for that, it will be at the Silicon Park Pavilion, starting at 5:30. It will be both hybrid, meaning in person and, uh, on Zoom. So this mailer actually went out to every residential address in the city. So I would hope that you would have gotten it in the last week or so. Uh, there will be a third open house in February and that will be at the Clover Park Technical College Rotunda. Also a 5:30 start and also in person and on Zoom. So the idea here is, uh, to continue to focus at least tomorrow night on housing because that is where many people are, are seeing an immediate effect to them or that's where their interest lies. And then, uh, coming into February and perhaps in March, if we do get to have one more open house, we'll be talking about other issues as well as housing. So stepping back a bit, what is the scope of the review overall? Uh, first and foremost, it's re- um, reviewing the comprehensive plan as it stands against current state law. Multi-county planning policies which are put out by the, uh, Puget Sound Regional Council. There's a regional growth strategy that goes along with that. Then there's the Pierce County countywide planning policies, kind of the next level down. And growth targets that are adopted by Pierce County, once the state identifies a total number. It gets, uh, sent to the county council and they establish, uh, the city's specific targets. And then in terms of development regulations, it's looking at, in particular, this round housing and then also critical area regulations, which have seen significant change again in state law. But also, as I mentioned before, this, uh, cycle really is focused on housing and it's dealing with affordable housing for everyone. And then that middle housing and accessory dwelling unit densification of the single family areas. The other things that are being included in Lakewood's review are short-term rental regulations. So if you recall, this came to you uh, last fall for an initial discussion, uh, but essentially with the additional number of accessory dwelling units that are now, sounds a little odd to say it this way, but required to be allowed in the residential, single family areas. The question has been, uh, whether short-term rentals would be allowed within the ADUs or not. So that will be back in front of you this spring. And then related to all of these housing changes, uh, this again was brought to you this last year. The fact that in Lakewood right now, the only place where shared parking or on-street parking is contemplated in code is for the two subareas downtown and station district. There is no, um, uh, citywide, either historical pattern of or development regulations allowance of on-street parking in residential areas. And so given the fact that we have, again, these, uh, additional housing units that are going to be uh, coming in over time, once this is in place, as people choose to develop. Uh, where are people going to park? So that will be another question in front of council. Then we have our two subarea plans, which if you remember, the council said, uh, when each were established downtown and also the station district, that there would be every two years a review to see if they are being implemented as anticipated. And what has happened since 2018 for downtown and since 2021 for the station district is the council, um, has adopted updated process here. So once we get beyond 2024, both of these plans will become part of the 10-year review of the comprehensive plan and there would also be a five-year check-in. So rather than every two years, these things would be in front of you every five. The final subarea plan that's going to be talked about and brought to you significantly updated is the one that was first adopted in 2011 for Tillicum. It has now been expanded to incorporate Woodbrook as well. And it is being drafted, as I said, with input from members, uh, both residents and business representatives from those two areas. What does this physically look like for your comprehensive plan? Uh, right now, the comprehensive plan has 11 elements and you'll see the table of contents on your left. On the right, you'll see how it has been expanded. We now will have 15, uh, elements and then, uh, acronyms and references because unfortunately with land use planning, there's an awful lot of acronyms. So we'll have those laid out as well. But the other big difference is going to be the addition of these appendices, uh, to the comprehensive plan. So for instance, the, uh, subarea plans, all of which have been adopted since the 2018 or, excuse me, 2015, last periodic review, they've been adopted. So they will become official, uh, appendices and, and referenced adopted, uh, into the full comprehensive plan come 2024. This is just an example, so please don't, um, memorize any of the language here. It's all very much subject to change. But to give you a sense of how this will be coming to council and planning commission for review, you'll see a chart like this that has on the left-hand side, the existing language in goal and policy language, uh, for whatever element we're addressing that particular moment. On the right-hand side, you'll see new language and that could be red line strikeout. That could be a completely new element or goal or, or policy. It could also be some things being removed. And you'll see all of that, uh, in color as well as in, again, red line strikeout for reference. The column in the middle will explain why the change from the existing language or existing layout to what's being proposed. If we were to try to hand you simply a red line strikeout of the 23 versus the 24 plan, there are so many changes, it would just be, uh, unmanageable. It'd be unreadable for you and, um, quite frankly, a waste of time to try to go back and forth between the two. So we're hoping that this, uh, type of audit is what it's being called will be helpful to explain to the public, to the commission, to the council, uh, the highlights and the hot points where changes are, are being made. Then you'll see, uh, the new element, uh, layouts. So if you're familiar with the current comprehensive plan, it varies from chapter to chapter, but there are significant, um, sections of background information or historical information and then what would be now considered something that could follow into an appendix, an appendix. So what you'll see now are much shorter introductions and then a background. And then it'll also point you to, uh, if there are other documents, whether they be an appendix to the comp plan or external documents where additional background information can be found. And the idea is to really focus the comprehensive plan on the policies and goals that have been adopted by city council and are being implemented through, uh, city action and budgeting. So for here, for instance, this is the first new housing element, uh, goal and a set of policies related and this is reflecting that new need to plan by area median income level. And then again, there'll be those appendices. So you'll see clear reference to those and they will be all available as part of the larger package. In terms of timing, we are in, uh, that first, uh, bullet there on your left. Between now and April, we're really deeply engaged in the technical review and the drafting of new or updated policies and regulations. We're holding our series of open houses. We've got our steering committee work underway. And, uh, as I said, we are continuing to go in front of the planning commission pretty much every meeting as well as coming to you periodically. May 1st is, uh, the deadline for the big package to come to planning commission. And what the package will include is, uh, a number of items. It's going to be the comprehensive plan draft changes. It's going to be development regulation draft changes. It's going to be all of the subarea changes. It's going to be, uh, the appendices that, uh, will be referenced as part of the comprehensive plan going forward. So between May 1st and June 5th, the planning commission will, will take the time it needs. Uh, and if it comes to the point of June 5th where the commission needs more time, then that message will come to you, uh, and then assuming things do go well and they take their public hearing on the 5th and proceed. June 26th is when the, uh, planning commission is scheduled to make its official recommendation to council on the package. Assuming that all happens, July 8th is when this comes to the council. So it will be again, that same large package of regulations, uh, policies and then also all of the appendices. Uh, background, background documents that were made in preparation for putting all of that together. The following week is when your first or only if you choose, public hearing is scheduled, so July 15th. And then between July and August, uh, is when you would have discretion to have multiple public hearings and/or a series of study sessions to decide what action you may want to take here. And then September 3rd at this point is the date that you are scheduled to take action on the package. So that gives you almost two months of time, but of course, if you need more time, that, that's your prerogative. The deadline under state law is December 31st. Uh, but we are trying to, uh, help get this through the system and take action here at council before you're dealing with the, uh, budget this fall. So in addition to all of the things that are required, there's some things that Lakewood is also doing voluntarily to help bolster its record and, um, protect itself from any, uh, questions or challenges should they come up at either Department of Commerce, the PSRC, or even from the public. We will be providing, uh, the draft package to PSRC and Commerce as required by law. But we're also talking to Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of Transportation and ICLI, which is, uh, an local government climate change association, if you will, that's nationwide. We're getting all of their input as well prior to, uh, bringing this package to you for consideration. And once again, the, uh, final package has to be complete by the end of this year. Uh, and then under state law, there's now this five-year interim progress report that is due. So every 10 years is the process we're going through now. And then at the five-year mark, there'll be some sort of lesser, but still more than your regular annual cycle, uh, report that has to be developed. And that is it. So unless there's questions, I'd be happy to move to the next topic.
Well, I have a quick question. I'll open it up. You know, this is a very meaty subject, obviously, and because of the mandatory nature of the components of the comp plan and the comp plan review with the overlay of the state law requirements on housing. Um, I give you the question, when we have these public forums and opportunity for engagement, what would be most helpful? For you and the planning commission to hear by way of public comment, it's going to change the needle given all of the hand tying of local control that we've got. So what's going to help move the needle so that the public feels that their comments will have some sort of sounding board that rings true to them?
Yeah, uh, and you're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. There are new limitations and restrictions on local government authority where historically, uh, the city of Lakewood would have had much more discretion in terms of how to handle some of these questions related to housing, um, and, and by trickle-down effect parking, for instance. So what we're hoping to do with the public hearing process or open house process, I should say, is let people know that, um, there, there are some situations here and some changes that are black and white, meaning there is no gray area. There is no opportunity for, for squish, if you will. However, things like, um, the accessory dwelling unit question, things like, do you want, uh, on-street parking in the residential areas? And if so, how is that going to get funded? Is that going to be something that you as the general public want to pay a permit for or want to be dealing with something other than the transportation mitigation fee in the downtown? Things like that, it's, it's more the how you, um, comply with the new state rules uh, than it is the, do we have to do it? Because the answer is yes.
Yeah.
It's, it's just how you want to move within the discretion that you have.
Okay. So through the public, um, participation discussions, they'll be given opportunities to not only understand the why, but be, uh, it'll be provided some opportunities to help direct the how.
Yes, and yeah, both tomorrow night is scheduled for an hour and a half and then so is the one on February 28th at the Rotunda Clover Park Technical College. And at both of those, the, the staff spiel, if you will, will maybe be 15 to 20 minutes and the rest truly is open for public, uh, comment and, and dialogue. So we hope that people do show up. There will be in particular on February 28th, the opportunity to, uh, sit down in little, um, focus groups and provide, uh, additional, uh, information, uh, coming out of that. If you're, have an area of particular interest, be it the climate change stuff, because it's not just housing we're talking about, um, or electric vehicle, um, stations that may need to be built in the city or whatever the area of interest is for somebody, we're hoping to gather that, you know, on February 28th, as well as in the planning commission, uh, hearings that are coming up.
Good, okay. Just want to make it as meaningful as we can, right?
Right.
So Councilmember Pearson, I think Councilmember Laura Sella had a, a, Mr. Bokey then perhaps.
To the mayor's point about, um, you know, what can be effective and um, you know, I, I used to sit on the planning commission and it's, sometimes you get a few people that come out and sometimes there's more, but it really, um, I, I think one of the most effective ways to get people at least in the door is you have to outreach and then, you know, you've got the, we have the city of Lakewood Facebook page. We can do some surveys and things like that to at least get you know, there's, there's a, there's a mass out there and they, you know, they're not all going to take the time to come down to do public comment, but at least we could get some polling in or, you know, some surveys that, you know, what are they concerned about, which, you know, and, and gather some results from that. I think that, that would be helpful. Um, so I'll close my comment on that and I have some other stuff later.
Anyone else?
Mr. Bokey. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, thank you, Tiffany, for the presentation. So page 36 of our packet, the agency review of draft language to go to these, uh, other agencies. So there's the required ones and then there's three voluntary ones. And I think this is inspired and I, and I, and I really do thank the staff actually for sending them to these other groups because I'm hoping but, and, and I think I'm, there's a question gonna, that's going to be in here somewhere. Fish and wildlife, so they'll look at what sections are you anticipating? Wash dot will look at the transportation section, I guess, including future BRT routes, if we mention that. And I don't know how specific we're going to get. And ICLI will now look at our climate change chapter. So are we expecting? So first of all, they, they've all, have they volunteered to do this? Like, we're available to help cities with this.
Yes.
Second of all, are they going to give us, what I, what I would hope for ICLI, for instance, is they're going to look at our climate change chapter that we've worked on. they're going to look at our climate change chapter that we've worked on, the the planning commission worked very hard on. And they'll hopefully look at and say, have suggestions, like, here's some suggestions that are you might want to think about because it's really low-hanging fruit that you haven't thought about before. Other cities are doing this, for instance, to really, is that what we're looking for here? Or what are expectations from each of these agencies?
You're you're right on point, Councilmember Bokey. So PSRC and Commerce, it's kind of a mixed bag, actually. PSRC, the city is flat-out required to submit it there, and they are certifying that the comp plan and the regulations are consistent with the GMA and with, in particular, Vision twenty fifty, the multi-county planning policies, in order to have Lakewood be eligible for funding for transportation dollars that flow through PSRC. Commerce is a mix because there's a required submittal to them, but they now have as part of an optional process a review of climate change regulation or policy that the city would adopt. And if the Department of Commerce says, we bless this, it provides the city with appeal immunity on that topic. So if we actually get to that point where we're ready and and can get it into commerce early enough, that that is hopefully what we'll get, should there be a challenge locally. And then, yes, Department of Fish and Wildlife, DOT, and ICLI have all already expressed interest and offer of assistance to the city. We've submitted things back to ICLI and to Department of Fish and Wildlife already. DOT will be next. And the idea here is here's what you need to do to meet state law or to meet what agency would hope you would, this particular state agency would hope you would do, and then here's ideas to kind of go above and beyond. And it's up to the city to incorporate what makes sense right now, maybe identify others for down-the-road implementation plans, that sort of.
Good, well, I'm interested, I think we're all interested in hearing that because just hope hopefully they'll come up with some constructive ideas that'll help help us improve the process. I'm positive right now, but maybe maybe naive, but okay, thank you.
Mr. Pearson? So the layout on the, both the format for the red lines and the comprehensive plan, I I like the layout and I always appreciated on the planning commission, the concise, you know, super clear changes. That's always nice. So I just thank you for the effort on on that. And then I would just say, oh, actually, so for the critical areas, are there are there significant changes that we are expecting? I mean, I know the tree code kind of has already, we, you know, incorporated some changes into that to kind of get ahead of the curve on some things. And so is there any major changes where we're not going to be in compliance with new state laws or things as it relates to critical areas?
I wouldn't call them any major changes. There are things where the code is just out of date because bills passed or the agency updated its regulations, so we need to reflect that in our language. But it's not like there's a huge missing piece in the city's current code.
Thanks. And then I would just note to all my fellow councilmen, it's the the street parking issue is, you know, a very challenging, this is what I deal with in my day-to-day work, and it's a very challenging issue. You know, the other thing with with street parking is, you know, who maintains it? How do we fund it? How do we regulate it? You know, is it, is it paid parking and and so is it specific areas? I know typically, you know, they're not, developers aren't allowed to use that on-street parking as part of their density calcs. Is that correct? The, yeah, so, you know, it is supposed to be for the public use and not for developers to, you know, pack in more units, but and then the other topic there with the ADUs, I believe that was recommended to council from the planning commission. There wasn't a wasn't a unanimous vote on that one. So as far as, you know, including language about allowing short-term rentals as opposed to not. So just to be giving that some thought, you know, we have we have a lot of time, but those are important issues in my mind, so.
And then if I could, Mr. Mayor, somewhat fortuitous, you just had Pierce Transit in front of you because at our last Tillicum-Woodbrook Silberia Planning Committee, they did mention the runner program that's now available for JBLM. And there was a question of whether that could be expanded at all into Tillicum and Woodbrook because historically, you probably know this already, the the spacing and the the ridership for those forty-foot buses just isn't there, but there is a need for transit. So if there's a way to incorporate that in conversation with Pierce Transit, that would be appreciated by Tillicum and Woodbrook. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I will certainly bring that up with them. It seems to me they should be able to come right across high five and incorporate runner service in that area. But we'll check on that for sure.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Any other parts of the presentation?
No, this is it. Thank you.
There's plenty of it. Thank you. It's a good overview. A lot of work. Well, very good. Well, next we'll turn to Ms. Dodsworth and Ms. Neal to provide a special events update. Tag team, all right.
Oh, good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city council members. Good to see you. Welcome. It's good to see you here tonight. Our newest council member. We're excited tonight to give you an update. We usually come and do an annual update on our special events. Often we try and do it in December. You guys have been super busy, so here we are tonight. Really to do sort of a twenty twenty-three review, and then we'll also kind of give you an update on what's happening in twenty twenty-four. Get you two for one. So why in the world do we do special events? Is it all fun and games? You know, although we do have fun and we do play games, really our job is to implement council's vision. And so just to review that, it's Lakewood's a thriving urban city with core values of family, community, education, economic prosperity, and equitable delivery of services. And when we do our special events, we are really focusing on all of those things. We are doing family-friendly events. We're really trying to incorporate the whole community. We do them in different areas so that they are accessible to different folks. We have educational elements involved. We work with our business partners or we do activities that generate economic impact. And then, of course, always have an equity lens when we're putting things together. And then that ties right to our Lakewood Legacy Plan, which says we're a vibrant, we want to create a healthy and vibrant community where there's lots of opportunities to encourage an engaged and livable community. So really, although it looks seamless, there's really a lot of thought going into all of the events that we do in the city of Lakewood. So I'd like to introduce Lonnie Neal. You've met her before. She works with our arts program as well as our recreation division, working on special events. And so we're going to kind of go back and forth and give you an update tonight on on special events.
Yes, fantastic. Thank you all for being here and welcoming me, and thank you for coming to the welcome walk. This is a kind of a fun update because we have I had the update for two thousand and twenty-three as well as twenty-four, which was just this last Saturday. In twenty twenty-three, this was a brand-new event for us, and the goal was to introduce people to the city of Lakewood and all the things we have to offer. As you know, we have a a large component of new members in our community every year because of our connection and affiliation with JBLM. We just have lots of families moving in and out. And this was an opportunity to have folks come see the park, get to know your community members, and in twenty twenty-three, we had a great event, incredible weather. In twenty twenty-four, on this Saturday, unbelievably, we had perfect weather because of the deluge the day before and the deluge we've had since. So it really has been fantastic. So we have our Love Lakewood logo and we had sunshine. The idea is that groups of folks would get together. We have name tags for everybody to, that mention how long have you lived in Lakewood. That's a discussion point. Walk folks around the Wahop Lake, so it's a little bit over of a mile of a walk. We had our youth council members lining parts of the the lake and the walk, greeting people and helping do traffic control. So we're really fortunate to have a lot of our community involved in this. And I want to reach out to, or give a shout out not only to our sponsors who are Amazon and Virginia Mason and Showcase Media and Twin Star Credit Union, but we had a really great collaboration both these years with Clover Park School District. They had made a full push out to everybody, all Clover Park School District families about this event coming up. And then both in twenty twenty-three and this year, they did a special reach out to any new families in the Clover Park School District within the last six months. So really trying to engage new people in our community, come and get involved. And we definitely had a great event this year, as well as last year. Last year, we estimate estimated we had about three hundred people participate. And this year, we probably had somewhere in the neighborhood of five or six hundred folks. We gave out about three hundred and fifty hats and scarves. So for folks who came and signed in, you know, they got a Love Lakewood. And you all have some of these fabulous swag to wear. And then we know that there's quite a few people who didn't necessarily sign up, but they came and walked or they came and participated with either a child or, you know, other family member. Fun costume contest, gifts and all the good things. So what we can say is that we really feel that this has been a successful event and more than likely will be doing in twenty twenty-five.
Sure.
Just a quick question as we go through. So great event, both last year and this year. Do the food vendors get something out of it enough so that they are excited to come back or even expand their numbers? Because it's a wonderful addition, I think, to have to the event, but is it used?
We haven't actually had that conversation with the vendors. We didn't have long lines like you would have at a normal event. They don't have to pay a vendor fee to come, so we make it at least worth their while to come. We're kind of selective of who we pick so that it's a type of cuisine or elements that may be of interest to the people that are there. So we had two different vendors there. We'll assess how they do. You know, our vendors are really loyal and supportive. Most of them are going to be there. We're very selective in who we select to be there or asked to be there. So we'll follow up with them and find out if it was worth their while, and then we can make some decisions if that's the right amount. You know, it's kind of a
It's nice to have them, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, I know some people did purchase some things, but again, I'm not sure how they did, but we'll find out.
Okay.
Yeah, but every year we try and add a little something else to make it more beneficial to the individuals who are participating.
Just a comment. They want to know why we don't do it more than once a year.
I'm sorry, what?
What? Why don't we do it more than once a year?
Well, we could do it every month if we really had planning and capacity, but, you know, we talked about doing it more than once a year. But because we're doing so many events throughout the year, there's opportunities for people to get involved. The other thing is, is that once people come in January and find out more about what we're doing, they learn how to be more connected to the community so that they can get involved with getting a postcard or the website or how they might get information through the school district, so.
That was just to say they really did enjoy it.
Yeah, yeah, I think people did. Thank you. So moving on to our MLK celebration, of course, a couple of weeks, weekends ago, we were recognizing the legacy of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Last weekend, we pushed out the first of three videos for this year. Last year, we did a video. We really focused, there's, first of all, there's a stakeholders group that's community-based and it's made up of individuals who spend the whole year. They meet all year long to develop how we might recognize the legacy of Martin Luther King Jr. in our community. Last year, we focused on a video, the theme and the quote that they followed was, everybody can be great because anybody can serve. And so last year, there was one video. This year, the theme was thank you very much. If you can fly, then run. If you can run, then walk. If you can't walk, then crawl. But no matter what, you have to keep moving forward. And so there's three different videos focusing primarily on youth on their response to that question, and they were doing that. So that video recognition is one way that the city celebrates that. And then we have another program. It's called our Hidden Heroes. This is a little sniglet from last year. And we'll just play that right now for you. Is there sound that comes with that? I'll just, as our city clerks trying to help us with that sound. Following the next two weeks, we'll be again sending out the three videos that we did. And then the Hidden Heroes program will be running throughout the month of February, which is Black History Month. And the Hidden Heroes, as you might remember, is honoring African-American individuals within our community that are doing amazing things. Some people you may know of and other people you might not be aware of. And then we also often include some national individuals as well to highlight the work that folks are doing. Okay, so let me just move forward then. Okay. So anyway, this was in your packet. I'm not sure if you were able to see this, but it was just a little thirty-second recognition of the program that we did last year. So we can come back to that.
Okay. And on Saturday, April first, we had a public art unveiling of our Gateway Arts piece. This event was to commemorate and celebrate the work of this public art installation that we had. The Arts Commission and council, as you know, we worked well over a year developing the planning and the selection of the art piece. The unveil, the unveiling was a great way to recognize the community engagement and community involvement for this art. So we have collaborated with Seattle artist John Fleming. And it was a fun, short little event at Motor Avenue. And we had, you know, folks come to the city booth to greet, and we had a musician there. And of course, it was wonderful to have the council there for the ribbon cutting.
So every year we have a program called Parks Appreciation Day and
That's a picture of the mayor, but two slides prior to that, there was a picture of the mayor, and they're really completely different. I think I'm missing something here.
I think there might be a filter on that one. Anyway, I just the this picture or this slide particularly shows Parks Appreciation Day, we usually do it the fourth Saturday of the month. This is a countywide program that we've been doing for over twenty-three years. And the city was one of the founding cities to actually start this program, and we're still doing it every year. Parks Appreciation Day occurs in April. It's kind of our ability or our opportunity to get citizens out, groups out, to celebrate parks, to prep them for the summer season. They do a lot of those tasks. Sometimes we can't get to on a day-to-day basis, but it's really a great opportunity. There's a lot of before and after pics that happen. And we've been doing it for a really long time, so that's a representation of some of the slides from our past. But it's a great, it's, you know, individuals, families, church groups, businesses. We do a lot of the same jobs every year, but also new jobs. We usually focus on three or four parks and makes a big difference. How many volunteers do we have? We often get about between two and three hundred. The first year we did it, I'll just tell you. It was, I hadn't even been here a year. We did ten parks. We had probably over five hundred volunteers. We didn't have a facility, a park vehicle. I had like two broken shovels and blow a weed eater. So it was really, the citizens just came out like crazy. They were so excited to do something and really be a part of a community. And and again, we've just kind of gone from there. We do, we do park appreciation projects all year long with groups and individuals, but this is really the day that we focus on that. This is the year, that's the date for this year, April twenty-seventh. We'll be doing that again. And again, we'll be, we always do something at Fort Tillicum because it's a great facility for, you know, lots and lots of people. We do Graves' Concern. We do something at the dog park. We do Scotch broom, invasive plants. We do Graves' Concern. We do something at the Dog Park. We do Scotch Broom, Invasive Plants. But we'll also do something I think we're going to be doing. Springbrook, of course, will be planting the garden um that we just built. We'll be doing probably something out at Harry Todd Park, and um I think we're going to do something in Active Park this year.
All right, this.
Just have a question on on the Parks Appreciation. So is there, you know, it's the first year, you guys had it at ten parks or wherever it was spread out. Um it sounds like it was a overwhelming success with, you know, limited resources and whatnot. Is there any thought of doing like a Parks Appreciation Week or something or a a month? And and maybe spreading it out to like all of the parks, but like on different days or something where it can, you know, over the course of the the week or the month, you know, we can incorporate more parks than just a couple, you know, uh each year, and people would be more inclined to maybe volunteer at a park that's closer to their house that they that impacts them more.
Yeah, that's that. That's a great idea. What we do do is we have this one particular day that we sort of promote. But then we also work with um a couple of the different churches have a pa- a compassion weekend, and it's usually the weekend after. Sometimes it's the weekend before. So we're also incorporating activities um in the different parks. We also work with the neighborhood associations. For instance, Oak Brook used to always do their Park Appreciation Day um on a different day than than ours. So we will work with the community and do that. For us, we kind of hyper-focus the energy on one day and one place. But again, we'll work with all the different groups to expand that so that we can get as many different sites as possible. And one of the things that's really um beneficial to all of our park system is to get those adopt a park groups, whether it's a one one-and-done or whether it's an ongoing support. The other thing that we do um on Park Appreciation Day, as well as we focus on all of our adopted street people. And so we we uh encourage all of our adopted street people to go out and do their cleanup, like Pierce Transit or something. They talked about that tonight. We encourage them to do also the cleanup on that day so that there's just lots of people out doing lots of stuff in lots of areas, so. But that's a great idea that we can make sure that we're getting more out there to uh to cover more ground. Yeah, I think the ten parks was just craziness because, you know, we didn't know what we were doing, but we sure had a good time.
All right, so on May thirteenth, we had our Ray Evans Memorial Fishing Event, which is our uh kids fishing event. And this year, we featured it at Harry Todd Park because that's our beautifully um renovated park with the the elevated pier and the uh the finger piers. Um so it's all about fun and family and fishing. So this is a collaboration with the um Department of Fish and Wildlife because they stock our fishes or our lakes every year with um fishing trout. And um they will rope off part of the lake um and release the fish in there. And then we are able to host this fishing event for kids um before the rest of the fish are released to the to the lake. Um what was great this year is we planned three sessions, uh fifty kids each because there's the capacity that you have on the beach, you know, just in terms of space. And those sessions um filled up so quickly, we released a fourth session. Uh and then we did have some drop by folks come too. So we estimate we had about two hundred and twenty-five fishers. And then um that probably means we had maybe six hundred to seven hundred people total because usually it's a it's at least a child coming with a parent. And uh just in my observation there, there were quite a few, just both families, you know, both parents are coming with one or two kids. Um you you know, and that the popularity of this kind of highlights where where we are right now, that kids don't have opportunities to learn how to fish. The the times are just different, and this is such an amazing thing that this community can provide. You know, for five dollars, they can come, they get a fishing pole that they get to keep. They learn how to fish. They catch it, you know, up to two or three fish. And then we have volunteers that are showing them how to clean the fish, helping them clean the fish. And then, you know, that's a skill that they they get to take with them, and then they can come back to any of our lakes to go fishing. So um our our fish cleaners will tell you that they cleaned at least five or six hundred fish that day. So, yeah, yeah, that's fantastic. So uh mark your calendars for May eighteenth next year. And uh the fishing event will move to American Lake next year.
Um yeah, the gr- fantastic event. Um my kids have gone to it the past couple of years and yeah, uh grave reviews. Um you guys opened up another a a fourth day. Do you have any sense of, you know, it sounds like that was successful as well. Do you have any sense of how many people were still asking about going that we weren't able to capture in those four days? Is this?
Oh, well, we would force session.
Or sorry, 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 yeah, sorry.
Um everybody that wanted to participate was able to participate. We kept a waiting list, and then we let them know that they could come at the end for the fourth session. So we had walk-ins as well as anybody that was interested. Um we were told to come at the last session, and that way we knew we had enough poles, we had enough fish, and and they could participate. So I don't think anybody that was interested in participating wasn't able to participate.
Great.
And so that's kind of typically how we how we do that. We try and start as best we can with billing from the beginning to the end. Um so, yeah, we we try and we just try and make it accessible to everybody, so. And if you didn't have five dollars and you were in Stillicum and you came up, we'd probably still let you participate just because we had it covered.
So what's the magic of making sure there are fish there at the exact time?
Well, we um so what happens is is that we net them in. So we actually have have a net. We do it the night before, so we have someone that actually stays at the park because one year when it was, um well, I think someone cut it. And um but um so we tie it off. It's weighted and it's tied off. So they stalk it, so they're all right there. And then they fish into the net. And then when they're all done, we pull the nets up and all the extra fish go out to the lake. And then we go and get all of the um hooks out of the net that got stuck in there throughout there. So it's kind of a revolving program. We have all these volunteers on the beach. So if you're hooked and you break your line, which happens, then they just walk back and they give the pole to to Lonnie, and then I give him a new pole, and then Lonnie works to repair the pole that she has so that we don't have to, they don't have to wait. They they have about an hour per session and they get to play. And just about everybody gets to fish typically. Yeah. Yeah, good. It's it's a great family fun event.
And if any of you like cleaning fish, we could use your help or baiting hooks.
Okay, it take does take, you know, individuals that um can help, so. Oh my gosh, yeah, they would have.
The gentleman from Boston, he does fish.
Oh, city manager?
Yeah.
He's he's not paying attention. Okay, we'll jump to the next activity. So um the city, um after COVID, you know, we built this beautiful place on Colonial Plaza. We started doing some dancing in the streets and some street festivals. Last year, we were able to do two, one in June and one in August. Uh the street festivals are really a great way to showcase that location. You know, that's an area that needs a little bit of love, and so it does bring people down to uh Motor Avenue and Colonial Plaza. Uh this the area's not a giant area, so we make use of the space. We bring in food trucks and vendors. A lot, all of our partners come in. Uh so there's, again, free family fun for everybody. We have roaming entertainment. And then DJs because people just love to dance. You know, you don't get that many opportunities to dance, you know, maybe at a wedding reception or something like that. So we really do uh encourage folks to come down and play. And it's just been a great opportunity for our um community to come out and play. The last one that we did, we really saw a lot more neighbors were coming out. You know, a lot of it is just drive-by, what's going on. They see a food truck, they stop, and then they participate. And last year, we did see more folks walking from out in that area, the neighborhood area coming down. So that's kind of exciting uh that once that area develops a little bit more and it could be really a special space here for the city of Lakewood. Again, free music, dancing. We have uh entertainment. We did dance demonstrations. Uh just gets everybody involved uh while they're out there playing.
All right, the Lakewood Farmers Market. Very exciting. Uh in twenty twenty-three, we had fifteen markets. They run every Tuesday from two to seven. Um it's from June through September, essentially. Um so on average, we have uh between eighty and a hundred vendors. The our partnerships allow us to have free entertainment and music, making it more like a festival, not just a farmer's market. Um we moved the farmer's market to Fort Stillicum, and that has just been an exceptional move. We, it's a great facility. It's accessible. Um, yeah, and we have the space that we can expand and do all kinds of things. So last year, we averaged about four to five thousand visitors per market day um with a total of fifty-six thousand visitors for the for the season. And um the average daily sales were forty-four thousand, and our season total was um six hundred and fifty-eight thousand all sales. Yeah, and so and we're seeing that increase every year. So and this definitely was the biggest uh the most participation that we've we've been able to have more vendors. We've because that park is just so generous, we can really spread out if we want to. And our vendors are very excited. They want to come back. Repeat customers want to come back. Um one of the things I want to point out is we introduced the SNAP and Market Match, which is the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program in twenty twenty-two. And um we've seen that program really grow and thrive. Um last year, we had four four hundred and forty transactions. Uh so that could be the same people coming back every week. Um but that basically means they we have uh eighteen eighteen thousand five hundred dollars that has been being spent on fresh foods with the support of the uh SNAP and the match programs. So it's just a great way that we're reaching all of our community and bringing great quality food to them. And then we also have our Healthy Bucks program, which is for um kids get a a two-dollar coupon essentially that they can get any fresh fruits or vegetables that they want that day. And that's um a sponsored, our our sponsors is uh Virginia Mason, and we thank them for that. So that that three thousand dollars uh goes a long way to having these kiddos get their hands on fresh fruits, and they love it. They absolutely love it. So in twenty twenty-four, we are, we are gonna, oh.
Yeah, we got a couple of questions.
Yeah, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, uh so what what day of the week is it on?
Tuesdays.
Okay, yeah, so and it's from like, what, two to five or something?
Two to seven.
Two, seven. Is there, are you aware of any um, you know, we have DoorDash and these other things. Is there any one that that goes to a farmer's market and can purchase things like through an app or anything that uh could be delivered? Does that, does that exist at all? I mean, I think like if I'm working throughout the day, you know, I don't have the opportunity to go visit the farmer's market, but I would certainly love to get a bouquet of flowers delivered or a platter of fruit and, you know, different things. So it'd be, I would just be interested to see if there's anything that exists like that.
I haven't, I haven't heard of that, but that's a great idea. We could pursue that and see um or Uber.
Yeah, I just didn't know it, yeah.
It's really interesting idea, yes. I I think that the actual vendor would have to have DoorDash or Uber because you would be doing a transaction with them, but maybe if there was a partnership or something that we could explore. But I think it would have to come through the vendor, but I think it's a great idea.
Or there could be a nonprofit or something. That, I mean, it's a great idea because we do try and make things as accessible as possible, and that could be another way of individuals being able to participate. So that's a great idea. We'll we'll think about that. Look into that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I just wanted to follow up with this beside, this is such such a great picture. Um we also besides SNAP, which is um, you know, a a card system, if you're familiar with that program. But we also do WIC is there for several weeks. They get, you can do your WIC uh checks there. And then we also, there's uh Long-Term Care and Aging has senior checks. So a lot of the individuals in our community that might not really be able to participate at something like the farmer's market gets to come and participate. And um it's just another way of them to be engaged in the community. It's a lot of respect and dignity for those people. So so that's kind of a cool thing, too. Oh, why don't you tell them about what's going to happen in twenty twenty-four?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four, um it markets will be on Tuesdays, two to two to seven, same as before, starting the June fourth uh going through September. That's it'll be a total of fourteen markets, and we're adding a feature this year that we're doing um themed pop-up markets. So that the the concept behind this is that new businesses or folks that are kind of wanting to dabble into the the farmer's market can have an opportunity to come, set up a booth. Um so like, for example, like we we can have veterans-owned businesses, wellness and sports-focused businesses, um new businesses that have opened within the last eighteen months. So we have some themes for these pop-up markets, so it's a, it's great exposure for the businesses to get involved. And then it's it's something new for all of our clientele who are coming. Uh so, you know, anybody in our community who's coming every week, there's going to be something different to come and experience at the market. Uh we're going to have a Kids Day, which we had done several years ago, and that's always fun. Um we also want to do a partnership with um South Sound First Nation Organizations. So we like the idea of having tribal organizations be able to come and have a day at the market. Um a day with local artists, uh women-owned businesses. So we have a a selection of themes that we're going to be launching this year.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question on that. So what is the benefit that the vendor gets to for these pop-ups, especially today days? Is there something or is it just focusing on a specific topic?
Maybe a free.
Well, they would, it would just be a new um, an opportunity where if you weren't ready to do a full-on fourteen or fifteen season, you, yeah, we're gonna like take the big shelter and say this is going to be our pop-up market. It's going to be, and then really kind of do a lot more marketing is all of the vendors are are um veteran-owned businesses. So that's going to bring out new people and also give those folks an opportunity to sort of test drive it. Now, they may come do the market and figure out, oh, this is really um not hard to do. They could then, you know, go into the market and be a part of the market. And maybe they're already in the market, but we really hyper-focus on their group uh or their particular um organization. So the benefit is just to get experience and give them an opportunity. When we were uh developing the um, when we were developing, we're working on the Nusqually Partnership Project. I was out there chatting with them and a couple of the folks um were asked, were just telling me about that they'd had this um art show or something at um that was their first one that they'd done the weekend before. And I was saying, oh, my gosh, you guys should come out to our farmer's market. And that kind of led to this pop-up idea, and so they were really excited when I said, oh, yeah, we get four or five thousand people through there. You know, I think, you know, they were like, oh, my gosh, we had barely forty people that showed up to their thing locally. So they were so excited because it does give them more exposure and an opportunity. The other thing that the market's done, which you may be aware of, because I've heard it a couple of times when we've done our business showcases, is is that it's kind of been a an um economic development incubator for some businesses. They've started at the market. They did well. They got a clientele. Now they're a brick-and-mortar store, or they have a food truck that they're doing, or they might have started with a tent. So it has been a way for businesses to grow in Lakewood. And I have to say, we've been doing this for quite some time. We can be really selective with our vendors because it's um, we don't just let anybody come through. They really have to have quality products. They have to be able to really be good customer service for our visitors. And um and they're super loyal to us because we really treat them well. We ask how they're feeling. We ask what suggestions they have to make things better. And that's why it's such an amazing market is because um we really work to make it amazing, not just have a bunch of vendors in a parking lot. So it's really a great experience for the vendors as well, for the people who come and visit, which I think you've all probably enjoyed that.
Okay, and that just segues right into the summer concerts, which are also on farmer's market evenings. Uh these are Tuesdays, and uh the the concerts go from six-thirty to eight. So they're not every single market night, but they're the majority of them. Um and what we have found is it 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 it's just a, it's a win-win all the way around. We get, we get a really big draw of folks coming to be at the the market. They'll get something to eat. They do their shopping for the day. They bring their family. And then they stay uh for the 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 concert in the evening. And um, yeah, we, the numbers just seem to show that we have more people coming on those days, and our vendors do better on those days. And it's fun. They're they're all fun-themed concerts. Um it's free. It's all ages, all abilities. Again, the pavilion is a beautiful building. It's a beautiful facility. Um and it just flows really, really well. And.
Twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, in twenty twenty-four, uh we have nine concerts. Yeah, in two thousand twenty-four, we have nine concerts that are scheduled. The first one is gonna be on June eighteenth. And for those of you who maybe know Dave O'Keefe, the House Band of Lakewood is our kicking, our opening band, which is fun. It's, yeah, locals, and they're great, they're a great cover band and do a lot of fun performances. And then we have country, we have reggae, we have a Beach Boys band. We have a band called Abagrafts, and they're an ABBA cover band. And top forty, so lots of, yeah, lots of fun variety for, for everybody.
Did you get Taylor this time?
Tay-Tay, a Tay-Tay concert. All right, so Summer Fest, our big, 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 big event crescendo, right? In the middle of summer, so on July fifteenth, it happened this year. It is an event that runs from eleven o'clock to, in the morning till ten P M. We estimate we have at least twenty-five to thirty-five thousand visitors. It is getting bigger and bigger every year. Again, because, because we have new community members who are coming in because of our military and then return customers. And the word is getting out, even outside of Lakewood. We do have folks that come in from the surrounding area, because this is such a fun event. It's free for everybody, it's free to park, it's free to, it's free admission to bring your family in. All the entertainment is free. And there's a, a lot going on, that you're probably aware of. We have this great passport program. This year, it's, it was, it's live your best life and a wellness aspect to it. So the partners that we have in there, it, it work on providing experiences or free things to engage with kids and, and adults and our community. It's just a great partnership program. So we have a car show, of course, lots of music performances. And face painting is free. The pavilion was our international festival, scheduled with all kinds of performances all day long. Very successful. I guess, yeah. And of course, we have our Evel Knievel bike and our trampoline, our performers. And the balloons in the evening, our balloon glow with the big balloons that are, yeah, coordinated to music. And, oh, we're not gonna have them at all.
The cool part about this particular little clip is, is that when the Summer Fest comes out, the whole crowd cheers. I mean, you get to have that feel of when, of what it feels like during the drone show. It's really spectacular, and the people really are excited about that.
You'll have to go back and listen to that.
This will be the second year we've done drone, last year was the first.
No, last year was our second year, yeah, with the drone show. And it's, it's funny, because, you know, you were on the cutting edge of doing that. I mean, I think the Olympics did it. But, but now we've gotten so many calls since last year on what, you know, can you send us your information, send us your staff report, all of the data you collected, the codes and things. And so many, many cities are now looking at doing drone shows. You know, they're, they're community-based, they're environmentally friendly, and they're fun. And, you know, they're really specialized to, well, at least for us. I'm not sure how they're doing in other cities, but they, it was very much specialized to our event, the activities we did during the day, and what we love about Lakewood. So that was cool.
And Summer Fest in two thousand twenty-four is July twentieth, so save the date on your calendar. All right, Festa de la Familia was Saturday, September ninth. So this, in, this really is the first time for this event. We had kind of a soft launch to this in two thousand twenty-two for the Saturday Street Festival. And we had so much community interest in expanding this program or this event, that it, it, we, we gave it its own full day and moved it to Fort Stillicum Park, so we could really expand it. And, and we did, we, it grew and it was very popular. The timing worked, we had representatives from the Mexican consulate attend, and they were overwhelmingly impressed with how we celebrate our community. We received great feedback. And the consulate gave a great speech in both Spanish and English, which is available on our website. The pavilion, we had, we had performances scheduled there all day that were popular, it was great, lots of dancing. We, we had an art show for the first time in Shelter Number One. We highlighted ten local artists. And then we also had a community ofrenda. And the public were encouraged all day to bring, you know, either a photo or memorabilia of their loved one. The city provided marigolds and battery-operated candles, because we can't really do the real ones. And, and we had note cards that folks could write a special memory or something that they wanted to say about their loved one, and then put it in the community ofrenda, and it was great. I mean, it really, it just blossomed, it was a blossoming thing all day long as folks were adding their special memories to it.
And the really cool thing, too, is with the art as well as this, it really provided an educational experience to individuals about, you know, Hispanic culture and why. And there were, people were just so excited to share their art, their history, their stories. And so again, it's that community awareness and really opening up for everybody in our community.
Yeah, lots of fun things. We had about forty vendors, again, car show and entertainment and face painting. And those are all things that are provided free to our community who are attending. And then we were able to dovetail this with the new mural at Fort Stillicum Park at the bathroom. Our artist Angelina, Angelina Villa, Villa Lobo Soto worked her schedule to make sure that this could be done, so that we could do the ribbon-cutting on this day. And I, I mean, it was a gorgeous day, it was a great thing to show and unveil to the public. And that, and we were, again, lucky to have the Mexican consulate there with us to celebrate it. It was just fantastic. So next year, September seventh, save the date, we're gonna do Fiesta de la Familia again at Fort Stillum Park.
I, I bet you they come back, and they, they've actually said they wanna participate more. They, they contacted, well, we spread the word, and they came and said, hey, can we come and do a presentation? We said, absolutely. They pushed it out all through their media sources as well locally for individuals to participate. So I think they're gonna get more engaged and probably just help make it grow and maybe bring new resources, partnerships to this event for us as well. So Truck and Tractor Day, one of the greatest days in the city of Lakewood. This year, it was, or last year, pardon me, it was on October fourteenth. This is really our city's fall festival that we do to celebrate the fall season in Lakewood. Another opportunity for families to gather and come out to the park and just have a great time and a lot of fun. We have a pumpkin patch, so every child gets to get a free pumpkin. If you can carry it, you can keep it. We have opportunities for them to decorate. Some families take their decorating kits home, so they can do it together as a family. But you can also decorate your pumpkin there at the park. You know, all you need is a pile of dirt and a couple of trucks, and the kids get to play. And that's a fun area for kids just to, to get into the dirt. But then they also can do a great hay, free hayride. It's a great way for folks that might not have been to the park before, a way to get all around the park. They go on a hayride, they go around the lake, and they come back. So it's really a great opportunity to, for us to showcase the site. And you can see all the parents, as well as the kids, are wearing their hard hats that they get when they sign up. We have entertainment, that's super fun. Oh, he is hilarious. Well, we hire him to come to all of our events, because he's so engaging. And he brings, they have their, they have fairies and other kind of people wearing all kinds of weird stuff. And the kids just love it, right? And he's so engaging with them, and he's this giant person. And, and the kids just love him, and he's just a hoot. So he's a lot of fun, so, yeah, you'll see him in a lot of our pictures, because he's so engaging. But besides the little trucks and tractors, of course, you know, there's just tons of, you know, we have, the police are there with their swap vehicles, we have mixers and buses and moving vans and tractors and trailers and just every kind of vehicle. You can climb on it, you can climb in it, you can ring, you know, do the horn, get your picture taken. It's just so much fun, these kids have such a great time. And then city manager's favorite activity of the year is the pumpkin chunkin'. It's where we have these big slingshots we've created, and the kids can just make their little pumpkins fly. There's a big target out there that they can try and hit, and it's just a lot of fun. Well, well, we're, it's a risk management issue, but we'll, we always think about safety first, Councilwoman Bokey, but we'll, we'll see how we can maybe, maybe put some big faces out there or something, something for you to shoot for. And it's typically the third, I don't have, I guess it's gonna be on October twelfth next year. So, again, a fun, free family event for the whole community.
All right, and then rounding out our two thousand twenty-three, we had the Parade of Lights on December ninth. This event, the parade runs from four-thirty to about five-thirty. And then at the end of the parade route is when we do the tree lighting. So the parade stages itself at Park Lodge Elementary School. Again, a great collaboration with Clover Park School District. It's a great facility, especially for our pedestrians who are waiting with a rainy, rainy day like we had this year. But this, you know, to, to speak to that, we have seen, this was probably the biggest participation we've had in this parade yet. Weather aside, we had, we had over forty groups or organizations sign up to be in the parade. And, and some of those organizations had like multiple vehicles with them, it was massive. And, and the, the participation of folks watching the parade was enormous. So, yes, we have, we have floats, and we had, I just love this little pony that's dressed up as a unicorn. First year that we had horse and buggies, so that was really, really fun. And thank you, City Council, for being out and participating in our Parade of Lights and putting up with the rain. It was, just really ended up being a fantastic event.
I'm sorry you can't hear this music, but here's our, of course, military marching band, and they were out doing holiday sound and marching and getting the crowd going there.
They were great.
The kickoff of our parade, and we're really lucky to have them be a good partner. Plus, we, of course, had school district bands and other music associated with the, with the floats. So that was really a great, a great kickoff for our event. You can see the crowd, you were all there, you saw how much fun it was.
At the end of the parade, the tree lighting happens. We have two Santa Claws at this event. So we have one Santa Claus and a Mrs. Claus who are inside the lobby at City Hall with our backdrop of the sleigh and the Christmas tree and all of that for photographs. And then we have a Santa who rides in with West Pierce Fire Department on their fire truck. They are the caboose of the parade, so to speak. And the fire truck drops Santa off at the Christmas tree. And then we have the Christmas tree lighting. And save the date, you have postcards on your, in your packets there that have highlight the dates for many of our events in two thousand twenty-four.
Didn't we do Jingle Bell Dash on Saturday before the parade, or was that the next?
We did the Saturday after the parade.
After the parade.
Yeah, and that was a partnership with the Clover Park Lakes High School Running Club.
Were you gonna try to do that again this year?
They, we may do that with them, they may do it on their own. They kind of, we kind of helped kickstart it for them, so they could see if they had the capacity to do it. It was a great event, they'd like to see it grow. So we'll probably have something, whether we sponsor it or just help them be successful.
Yeah, I think people enjoyed it, so.
Yeah, it's always a fun event. So, so anyway, we're grateful for your participation and your support throughout the year. These events really do contribute to a healthy and vibrant community. It really does bring our community together. You see everybody, all sizes, all shapes, doesn't matter where you come from or what your circumstances are. Everybody's welcome in parks, and everybody's welcome at our events. And, and I think that we've really done a good job of making them welcome. People are welcome when they come, and so they come back.
And I know there was a comment about budgets in your materials, but from a lodging tax perspective, we have funded this program as it has grown, because the needs and the staffing costs and the vendor costs have really grown to make these events as family-friendly and as free to all ages and all abilities and all income levels as possible. And so you, you should be proud of the investment that we're making through lodging tax and other, certainly, general fund resources to some extent, right?
Right, yeah, we, and, and primarily that's to help support the staffing, because you have to schedule it, you have to plan it, you have to organize it. We really are about safety, so there's lots that happens behind the scenes to make sure that just seems like an easy, seamless-flowing event. And, and we do continue to find sponsorships and partnerships, again, to make less impact on the general fund and more impact on the community. And so we're just gonna continue to do that and definitely hit our cost, return on investment requirements.
Definitely, it has grown, though, as I recall, years and years ago. I think we may have funded you guys for maybe five thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe ten on lodging tax, and now it's almost two hundred collectively.
Right, and it's, it's really important, too, because it does bring people from outside. And then again, that does create, you know, when there's a big event like at Fort Stillicum, the, the businesses are benefiting, and so people are out. And, and we've done surveys to know that people come to our events, and then they go off and do other things, so. So we're grateful for those.
Yeah, well, certainly open up to comments, I just wanna say thank you. And I'm really proud of everything you guys have done. Because remember, we talked years and years and years ago about really developing the market, and we had that little seed planted in our little meeting in the American Lake Conference.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, and this has just taken off to the point where it's been a catalyst for so many other great things.
Absolutely.
Summer Concert Series and all the other great vendor events, so, well done, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say you guys are doing a fantastic job. I started off in the Arts Commission, I think, when it was five thousand dollars, and was like, oh, my gosh, what is gonna happen here? And it has grown in that little bit of time, five, six years or so, to do so many amazing things, that I am just so impressed by the size of staff that we have here in Lakewood and what you guys put on, and how many people love it, are engaged in it, talk about it in advance. They wanna get these. So I think this is so awesome that these are out in January, because I can plan better now, too.
Put it on your refrigerator.
Yes, exactly. So you guys just get so many props. I think the, the behind-the-scenes of sponsorships, those things, that kind of stuff, those logistical little things that people don't really think of, like how that has grown alone, amazing. But you guys just do such an amazing job, they're stellar, top-notch events. And I'm very proud to, to be here and to be a part of it.
And welcome to Ms. Lonnie Neal for her able assistance in helping out all things parks this year.
She's been great, and I have to say Sally Martinez, she, you know, it does take a, the whole community, the police department, our maintenance workers, everybody comes together. It's all hands on deck for most of, all of the events that we do. And Sally really has just a creative mind, and she just really keeps us on trend and, and moving forward. She's not able to be here, she's out of town today, but we're grateful for her support, but we're really thankful for your participation and support, it really does make a difference.
Fantastic.
Thanks.
Well, thanks again. Any other comments or questions? I don't wanna hog the door here.
Just Pierce. One, so for the Summer Fest, my highlight was the drone show, that was pretty impressive. The one bummer is that my kids are young and they go to bed at seven, seven-thirty, and so they weren't able to stay up until nine-thirty or ten o'clock, when it got dark out for the drone show, unfortunately. And I don't know, I assume, well, I don't know. Are they fairly expensive or do, okay, yeah.
Yeah, it, it is expensive, and, and it's not effective unless it's dark. It's kind of like fireworks, so, otherwise it just looks like a bunch of little planes in the sky. So, but we do, we do videotape it, and so, you know, it is something that they could watch. It's not quite the same, but it is something that they could see after the fact.
So even with all of the advertisements, you know, that, if you, if you ran advert, I think that Amazon was on one of the ads. So even doing, even doing ads, it's still, it's, it's pretty pricey endeavor.
Amazon was kind of a big. Amazon was kind of a big overall event sponsor. City Council was very much uh responsible and contributing to the uh, the drone show, so. Um, but.
Love to see one in the wintertime about five P M.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying is could you do it again?
Yeah.
Well, council can decide to do whatever it is council wants to do, so. Maybe have it associated with the parade or something.
Good. You can do something like that. Your kids just need more irresponsible parents like us.
Yeah.
Yeah, schedule, what's sleep schedule?
All right, that's, that's a great idea. We'll think about that.
Uh, at the risk of piling on more praise, I just want to thank our entire Parks and Rec Department. Uh, I went to all the events last year. They were all amazing. The fishing event was really cool. They got to help some kids learn how to fish and help them beat the hooks and that was just great stuff all around. So thank you, everyone in the department. Please pass it on.
I will pass that on. Thank you so much.
Truly well done.
Appreciate it.
Well, great. Well, thanks again for everything and we'll let you uh go home and enjoy the newest season of The Bachelor. There you go. It's on right now. My kids watch that every Monday night. It's like, it's, you know, we are a reality TV family for some reason, but. Okay, so that concludes our three topics for discussion tonight. The items tentatively scheduled for the next regular meeting on February five are before you on your agenda tonight. And now we'll turn to reports by the city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. A few updates. I'd like to start with a legislative item. Uh, there's a bill that is uh moving forward, that Association of Washington Cities. It's a key priority for them, which is to allow municipalities, uh, local legislative bodies to increase their property taxes by up to three percent. Matter of fact, this is something, this has been a key priority for A W C for a good number of years. And um the purpose is, right now, the, the maximum authority is one percent. That was set by the state back in two thousand and one after an initiative was ruled unconstitutional. Um, however, just given where inflation is, um, this is something that municipalities have been seeking for a number of years. This is not something that's part of your state legislative agenda or policy manual, though it has been in the past as it related to supporting all that was A W C. My recommendation is that we sign on in support of this. A W C is in the process of routing a letter, getting all as many cities and towns on board on this. And uh, again, it's my recommendation that uh we sign on, on this. It's, it's not something that you, you know, I'm not asking you to actually implement it. I'm just asking that the city of Lakewood support it, just like a good number of other cities and towns are. So again, you, it would be a tool in the toolbox if it, if it was something that you did want to um utilize it sometime in the future. So um, so Mayor, I'll, I'll, I'll let you kind of uh ponder on that and uh maybe if you could give me some direction one way or the other, um, before the meeting adjourns, I'd, I'd, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, we can go through council comments and chat about a little bit.
Um, also, uh, wanted to uh let you know, I think uh we have forwarded this to you, that LASSA um did receive um the last chunk of major funding that they were seek, seeking five million dollars from the state's housing trust fund. There's still another million dollars out hanging out there that the city is pursuing for them through our congressional delegation and Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland is working very hard to get, to get that for them. So that potentially is coming later this year as well, once Congress gets a budget put together.
Fully funded without that million or do they need the million?
My understanding is that they are fully funded and can move forward, but you know, cost overruns or just cost projections given where the economy has really swiveled in the last couple of years. So, and of course, uh, this body, you have um appropriated uh three point two million dollars uh in support of that twelve million dollar project. So uh, they are moving forward. They are now moving into environmental review. They're brought in their developer and their architects and engineers, so it's moving forward and uh, so I just wanted to pass that on. Um, last week, uh, myself and the deputy city manager had an opportunity to meet with um representatives or leadership from Partners for Parks. If you recall back in May of, for those of you who are here, back in May of two thousand twenty-two, um, the city council allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to partner for Partners for Parks, a seed money for them to um kick off a fundraising campaign. And um, and uh, it was for them to develop a plan of action as well as develop organizational capacity and marketing materials and things and things along those lines. So when we met with them last week, and this was really the first formal meeting that we've had with them since you know, the early part of two thousand twenty-two, so you know, well over a year and a half ago. Uh, they had a couple of questions. One was they wanted to know if the three and a half million dollar commitment that they had committed to um was net of any funding of, of any um dollars that they would need to continue their fundraising. And initially we responded with um, no, it's three and a half million. However, after going back and looking at the pro forma, and I did provide some material that, that we shared, that they shared with us and that we shared with them, the answer is, is actually their net contribution is three point one million dollars. So, and I have followed up in a voicemail with um, uh, one of their representatives to communicate that. Um, the second question they had for us was, well, is the city's intent that that before moving forward on this project, that partner, partners for parks will have identified and secured the whole amount of now three point one million dollars. And we responded that, yes, that's what was agreed to, you know, a couple of years ago. They then pointed out that to date they have raised almost one point four million dollars, including a million dollars from um the names uh foundation, a grant from the names foundation. And um, I did, you know, again, walk them through, once, you know, they have identified, you know, their three point one million dollars, the city would then move forward with securing its, at the, right now, four million dollars. And uh, that would come in the form of um LTAC dollars from the city as well as seeking, you know, grants as well as state capital budget request uh through a future state budget session. And um, so again, just re-reminded them of that. But again, there was a couple of new people in the room, so they were appreciative of, of, of the background and how this is, this has come together. Um, what they have asked is, well, since we have secured one point four million dollars, would it be possible to move forward with the, some of the design, you know, preliminary design and engineering work on the project? And the primary reason on their end for doing that is that their current donors would like to see some progress on the project. And then likewise, potential donors would like to see some prod, some progress on the project. And so our answer to that question was, yes, that can be done. Um, however, that would require, you know, this body to take, to take action on that. Um, one of the things.
Come out of their one point three?
Say again?
Wouldn't it come out of their one point three?
Yes, it would. It would come out of the one point four million dollars that they, they have secured. Um, one, one of the um, one of the caveats I pointed out is that just from a capacity standpoint, uh, we're pretty full up as it relates to current park C I P projects. There's a lot of things in the queue. As a matter of fact, one of their representatives sits on your uh P R A B board and I kind of walked him through the projects and he's like, okay, okay. So I said, really, probably the soonest that we would be able to get to this is what we were planning for was two thousand twenty-five. Now, of course, this body, you have the ability to just say, okay, we're going to stop on some other projects and make this a higher priority than projects that are, that are current, that are currently in the queue. Um, you know, in addition to their motivation for wanting to show progress, one advantage from the city's perspective of moving forward on that work is it would allow us to get a much, much better cost estimate on this project. Cause that seven and a half million dollar total cost estimate was developed, it's probably three years old now, maybe even older. And you know, a lot has changed within our local and regional economy, so that's probably going to be a higher number, which means that the city's contribution is going to have to be greater because again, Partners for Parks is committed to, again, a net of three point one million dollars. So right now, what I'm doing is I'm essentially just giving you kind of a warning order, an update of the conversation that we've had with Partners for Parks. Um, I would like to, I, I've, I've invited them to come have a meeting with you as, at a future study session. So we have identified some dates. The soonest we, we could probably get them in front of you on our end, on your, based on your calendar, would be your, I think it's the February twelfth study session. So we're going to try and shoot for that, see what happens. Um, they also, um, I, I think some of them had come and met with you in the last year or so and also pointed out that there is interest in certain contributors or sponsors wanting to have naming rights for, you know, inside parts of the building and such. Um, you know, and I says, yeah, you know, the council said they were interested in that. And I also pointed out that the council does have a process, a naming process. You know, so I just, you know, just, but, but again, you have complete authority on how you want to, on how you want to handle that. So again, I just wanted to give you a heads up that Partners for Parks continues to move forward on their fundraising initiative, their gen, their, their, they've raised one point four million dollars to they would like to move to a step that we hadn't anticipated previously, which is to begin the design and engineering work. Um, and again, their motivation is to show progress to their current donors, but also to show future donors. If, it, it also, from, from the city's perspective, it's a benefit and that gives us a better cost estimate. The downside is managing expectations. It's what happens if they don't deliver on the three point one million? What happens if we can't in a timely manner go out and get all the rest of that money? And then also, you know, securing that money, how does that, for example, compete with like Edgewater Park? So we're, you know, the council has given direction that Edgewater Park is a key priority. We're doing the master planning process right now. I'm just using this as one example. The goal is to have that adopted by the council by May, so then we can then begin putting in grant applications this summer that the state legislature would then fund as part of their next biennial budget this time next year. And then if you throw the H barn in there, you know, what's the competence? Not to say that we can't get all of that funding, but I'm just, I'm just trying to manage expectations. So, so um, I, you know, I, I think, you know, the good news, it's January and uh, so I think there's definitely time, you know, to kind of work this through. I don't think it's any kind of a rush. Um, I did appreciate, you know, Partners for Parks coming, coming forward and giving us an update because I'd been hearing kind of just rumblings about what's going on, but nothing official. So um, overall, I thought it was a good meeting. So again, Mayor and Council just wanted to just give you an update on that.
So Feb. twelfth, that's what we're looking at?
That's, I, I've left them a message to that effect, but we'll see what their, what their, what their schedule um looks like. Um, back to LASSA, they were actually going to have a grand opening of their hygiene center um this week. Um, unfortunately, they had some frozen pipes. So it's been bumped out maybe a month or two. So more to follow on that. Um, the um, on, on Thursday, um, we, we have our state Capitol Hill Day meetings with our state legislators from the twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth district. The, our um, our first meeting is at ten thirty with Senator Nobles and then our next meeting is not until two, uh, two, three, three thirty and four o'clock. Um, I know the deputy mayor is, is available to go. It would be great to have two, if not three council members be able to attend most or at least some of those meetings. Um, myself and um Shelley Heldor will be attending those meetings again, but it's really for elected to elected um on, on these issues. So I would just ask if you can make those meetings, whether all of them or some of them, you know, please let me know. From a timing standpoint, um, I would say um, certainly the, the deputy mayor can, can probably handle the one with Senator Nobles and given, you know, the rest are kind of bunched up, you know.
Yeah, I might be able to come in the afternoon session.
So, um, but just wanted to, wanted to point that out. So it's an opportunity for us to quote unquote, go onto their turf, just like how they came here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go as many times to the twenty-ninth as they have come to ours.
So. And uh, also, um, next week we have um homeless point in time count. So if you have an interest in participating in that, if you, if you don't have the link, I, I know, I think I sent it out, but if you would like to participate in that, let us know. And uh, February third, uh, caring for kids, Happy Hearts Dinner. So I know, know a number of you are attending that. Um, so February fifth, two weeks from today, city council photos for sure. Okay?
Very good.
February fifth, yes. And uh, February seventh and eighth, A W C will be having their city action days. It was supposed to be this week actually, but due to some um, some uh hotel issues, it got, it got bumped out. So um, and that's going to be in Lacey, in a completely unknown facility. So because for years they held it down in essentially West Olympia, so. Um, and actually, I know a couple, who's signed up to go to that? I know I am. Anybody who comes?
I'm going to that mayor thing later in the month.
Mayor's exchange?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right. So, well, I'll go down and represent on uh.
Good.
A W, A W C action days. I still call it clack.
It's A W C action day?
It's uh on uh February seventh and eighth. It's a Wednesday and a Thursday. It's actually mostly a Wednesday, seventh. Do you have an interesting go on? Let myself or the city clerk go.
So on the heels of that, uh, any questions of the city manager before we kind of do a quick conversation on the legislative item on the table supported by A W C about increasing or at least providing authority for cities to increase their current uh levy rate for property taxes from one to three percent. Well, it's just to support the A W C. Yeah, I just sent a letter to support them. So it doesn't commit the city to doing that. I'm always a little hesitant on the tax piece of letting the genie out of the bottle because once governments get their hands uh in to revenue opportunities, it never seems to go back. Uh, that's always my concern, but I certainly open it up for conversation and direction. Yeah, right now, I think we'll go and do it. Yep.
I would, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just say that based on the knowledge that we have, that our budget is going to be um, shorter in the next couple of years, I would support it. Just to have the tool available to us, not to say we're going to use it, but I would support that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I am a little reluctant, as you are, to let the genie out of the bottle, so to speak. Uh, first, I don't want to deviate from our eight legislative priorities that we submitted. Right? We were focused on public safety and maintain that. Um, and as the city manager stated, it's another tool in the box in terms of fundraising, but it's a tool that multiple people can use in our community. So Fire District, uh, other municipal groups have the potential to use that to raise taxes for our residents. And I don't know that I want to allow that at this point, from my perspective.
Yeah, I think on that point, Mr. Coffield may be able to educate us. I think any of the other districts, the taxing districts would have to go to vote of the public for any increases on their part. I don't think this one percent opens the door for them or does?
Oh, no, no, it does, Mayor. It opens the door for all regular levies, starting with the state, which funds A through twelve, Pierce County, Sound Transit, um, the port, the regular levy for the Fire District, the city, the library.
So it's not just for cities?
Oh, no, it's all municipalities.
Well, that's challenging.
Because there's constitutional limits. Eventually it starts to squeeze the junior taxing districts. So parks are the low, the parks districts are the lowest, for instance. So during the last recession, actually, they started getting squeezed because there are overall limitations on the non-voted dollar amount.
Though I think that's going to take years to come back because the rates are so low. That could be fifteen, twenty years out, but you're right, Councilman Bokey.
So remember back before the one percent? You go six percent.
Hmm.
But inflation was much higher.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I'm in favor of signing on because I, I think it would have helped us when inflation was ten locally and we could only do one.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I would argue in fact that really the net result of the property tax limitation has been a proliferation of sales taxes and other taxes at other, at other levels. So you've seen you know, and, and other property taxes. So Flood Control Zone District, for instance, Flood Control used to be funded out of the county
Mm-hmm.
in general government or something. They created their own district and their own taxing authority. Southside nine one one is completely independent, you're right. They've one tenth of one percent for that. You know, you, you're seeing a plethora of one tenth of one percent, one tenth of one percent as that, as that tax rate goes up because they're because general government doesn't have any money anymore.
Yeah. Would that process, Mr. Coffield, be similar to what we do when we? When we approve the mill rate annually? Would we have the ability? Let's just say that this did get passed and cities had the authority. Would a city like Lakewood, for example, in this biennium say, okay, it looks like from our projections, our revenues are not going to completely meet our revenue needs. So we would vote that biennium to increase the tax from one percent to two and maybe in another biennial budget, it might be more rosy. So we could say we're going to decrease it or not increase it. Is that the flexibility?
Uh, Mayor, the short answer is, is yes. Though, um, just, um, one clarification, the city council does not set the, the mill rate or the levy rate. You set the levy amount. Washington state is different from just about every other state.
That's right.
That's, that's correct. That's correct. And it would be, and, and the, and the levy rate, as Councilman Boki was talking about, is really, um, to ensure that that there's a statutory maximum so that the, the, the levy amounts don't get a little out of control quite frankly. But, um, but that would be done every fall on an annual basis, just as you do now. And, uh, you know, you went through that for two thousand twenty four back in, uh, September and October. And then you took action, I believe, in, in November for the two thousand twenty four property tax levy.
Councilmembers Bell and Pearson, what say you on this?
I have a question about what was the, it creates twenty five percent state property exemption for low income seniors and disabled veterans.
So, Councilmember Bell, that's just a statutory option or statutory, um, program that currently exists, uh, whether or not this is in place or not. Um, and so if you fall within a certain income level, um, or a certain age, um, then you're eligible for those property tax, um, reductions and it's, it's tiered. So, eh, eh, like tier one is, eh, you know, based on age and income at a certain level. And then you're not subject to certain voter approved levies. And then if you're even a lower income, then you're, the only levies you're subject to are really just the basic levies and that's it. So it's kind of a tiered effect.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I appreciate having another tool in the toolbox as we quite frequently say with a lot of things. But I am hesitant on it. So it is a priority through A W C. So majority of the cities are already signed on to it already. Whether or not we do something with it in Lakewood, I think is yet to be determined. So, thank you.
Mr. Pearson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so what is the total like realized cost for a resident? You know, if, if it was to increase from the current one percent to three percent, what is that?
So, Councilmember Pearson, based on the two thousand twenty four levy, the one percent increase, um, resulted in an estimated three dollars and fifty two cents for the average home in, in Lakewood. And if I recall, uh, the average was based on, I think it was five hundred and fifty thousand. Don't quote me on that. It was, it was around that dollar amount.
Annual?
Annually, annually. So an additional three dollars and fifty two cents. So, um, going to say two percent, it would be double that. It's a three percent, it would have been, so ten dollars, it would be ten dollars per year. It would have been in two thousand twenty four.
Yeah, and I, I, I kinda echo Mr. Boki's comments about, uh, you know, being able to get you through a tough time. Um, and it's, uh, it, it sounds like the other portion of it is, you know, we don't have full control of what, what it can be used on, but the voters do, right? So, um, it, it, it is handy to have an extra tool in your toolbox. Um, and then ultimately it does have to get passed. You know, through other folks. I thought that that's.
Goes to a vote of, it doesn't go to a vote. Yeah. Now, once it's passed, yeah, it's council manic, the vote would be us to do it annually. Yeah. Right. So how do they get to pull from it? I don't understand that. Well, it'd be council manic, as I understand it. So the authority right now, we're limited or capped at one percent, which is a dollar value based upon the assessor's analysis of the total.
Right now, it's, right now, it's, right now statutory is one percent. That's correct to three percent. Take into account over the last twenty years or so, just inflation and population growth, which even three percent doesn't take into account.
Sounds like we're a little mixed on it.
Mayor, if I can just interject, I'm kinda, I'm hearing, uh, right now, a no. So, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it to your attention and.
Yeah, if it passes through A W C or past legislature rather, uh, then obviously we'll have to have a thorough conversation about it and just like we did the resolution with the school district, I assume we'd wanna have a little public hearing on it and get some input from folks. Cause everyone's, everyone has needs. I mean, I sit on Pierce Transit and they're battling the issue with not being able to have enough drivers and all this, and we're, you know, raising rates. It's just amazing, really. I mean, the cost of a mechanic right now, not that they're not worth it because they are, but it's just really expensive. Yeah. So the cost of general government, as Mr. Coffield points out, is, is going up and it's challenging. So. Okay. So I guess we're gonna, we're gonna take a pause on it from the city side, but we'll wait and see what A W C does and what the legislature does this year.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Okay, so let's, uh, turn to council comments here briefly because we do have an executive session, uh, tonight. And then we're gonna have a closed session following that. So I will start with Councilmember Pearson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, attended the Lake, uh, neighbor walk, uh, last weekend. That was great turnout. Kids enjoyed it. Um, you know, free donuts and, uh, smores is never a, a bad thing for them. So, um, looking forward to future parks events. Um, I have a, uh, Parks and Rec Advisory Board to tomorrow, I believe it is. Um, and then I just wanted to confirm, am I uh, attending the Pugetstown Regional Council or is that someone, there was multiple people, wasn't there?
You're the primary, I'm the alternate.
Okay, okay, I wasn't sure. Okay.
Yeah, I think you're on deck.
Yep, sounds good. Okay. Just wanted to confirm that. So that's on, uh, the twenty fifth. Yep. And that's it for me.
Very good. Councilmember Bell?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody's presentations today. I thought that they were just super informative and, um, uplifting. I love that. Um, I wanted to bring up one topic that we received an email about um, raising a flag and City Hall. So I would like for us to take a look at our flag policy and formalize it some way somehow. So we have very strict parameters so we can give someone a really solid answer as to why or why not something is done. So I don't believe we have that now. Honestly, I think it probably should be something that we go off historically of what we've already done past precedent would keep it a lot simpler and cleaner. So that would be something that I would like to see. I don't know if anybody else.
I think it's an excellent point. And if we have two or three of us who are willing to ask the city manager, take a look at it by way of a, a draft ordinance and it's codified.
That would be great. That's all I'm looking for.
And it looks like we've got consensus on that. Very good. Thank you.
That's it for me.
Excellent suggestion. Councilmember Laurella.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I also enjoyed the welcome walk. Got to meet some new members of our community that, uh, that had similar backgrounds to mine, uh, having folks who are retired from Boeing even, uh, and learning their stories and their, their interactions with the community. So that was pretty cool. Uh, I also appreciated the presentations today, specifically our, uh, uh, Parks and Rec folks, uh, talking about all the events we had last year and looking forward to the new ones. Uh, I'm excited about that. Uh, in regards to the Partners for Parks conversation, I'm concerned that the, outside of their one million dollar sponsor, they've only raised sixteen percent of their goal. Uh, and I'm very reluctant to commit spending any of city funds uh, on any sort of rescoping or development stuff until they have a better collection of funds ahead of them. That said, I'm okay with them spending some of the funds they've raised to redetermine the, the cost this would be and to do some preliminary scoping work. But I'd be reluctant to commit any city work to that at this moment. And the last item, I had a chance to meet with some members of our community about some concerns they had. Uh, and the big thing I got out of it is to encourage folks to talk to their neighbors instead of, uh, complaining to various authorities because a lot of things can be resolved if we would just communicate with each other.
Absolutely.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Councilmember Boki?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, went to the planning commission last week, last Wednesday, relatively short meeting, but, uh, couple of things. I mean, they talked about the comprehensive plan and their, their role in it, very similar to what we had tonight. Ours was different, but, uh, they did receive a presentation on that. Um, a number of new members and they, they're very impressive group. So I, I think that it's, they've got a lot to learn. They've got a big, big lift with the comp plan. They're just walking right into that. But I, I think that they're, um, they're, they're gonna pick up on it just fine. And I, I, I think they have time to, to, to get familiar with the whole thing. P C R C meeting, I don't know if you wanna talk to that. I, there's a nasty, if we weren't on air, I think there was, it would be a nasty word I would use to describe it. It was just not, it was just another lousy meeting and, um, not very well organized. I think staff was trying to pull something by cities. I mean, they had this piece of legislation. They said, well, we want you to prove it tonight. This is staff. And this one guy from one of the cities where they would be losing some property in the U G A just said, we're not in favor of that. And so it clearly became clear that they hadn't even been asked. They hadn't even been told or informed. And, and then it was like, well, who came up with this? And there was cricket. So it was a mess. And so I, I, I kinda gather every, we, we ended up not voting on anything.
It's gonna come back.
We, did we vote on the Bonnie Lake one?
Yes.
We did approve the Bonnie Lake, the Soul Land swap. But, um, the other three items and one item includes fifteen items in it. Um, were pushed off to next month, but it just makes them next month's meeting into a mess because I don't think we're really being told the truth. And, and, um, I'm thinking about writing the chair, Shannon from Furcraft, and just say, I'm, you know, I've lost confidence in, in, in the staff. I don't know what they're, who they're representing and what they're doing and.
We should chat about our own staffers who attends the T M C C meetings and find out what happened there.
Yeah. So, uh, very disappointing meeting from a otherwise disappointing organization. And so it just kinda continues to flail, I think. And, um, and the welcome walk was great. I enjoyed it. My, my wife worked at the, um, the booth for the school district and she said the button makers were a big hit. So all the kids and as mentioned, the, the, the schools were encouraged to send, the kids got their little school em- emblem, right? And, and made it to a button. So she said everything old is new again because button makers were a huge deal, you know, a long time ago. And, uh, so that was good. And the weather keeps being cooperative with us. So we're riding a lucky streak on that. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say I enjoyed the welcome walk. And I met this young lady. I think she said she was from Czechoslovakia. I couldn't understand her very clearly. Where she had, she says, I can't speak English and I want to talk to people. So she kept us engaged for quite some time. She was very interesting. And I think she would go a long way. She was visiting here. She'll be here until June. So I invited her back to some of the other events that we have. So she said, I wanna get to know more about the Lake to Wood. That was, it was great. I enjoyed that. And then on Thursday, I do have, um, as honorary commander for the sixty second, I do have an event. There's the evening. And I'll be attending representing the city. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. On the welcome walk, it was, uh, fabulous. I got a chance to meet some new people and then I got diverted. My crazy dog was dragging me all over the place. So, uh, I lost touch with a few folks, but it was really a nice event. And to your point about, gee, could we do it more often? What we might do the next time is actually have signup sheets. If anyone wants to lead, someone could say, if you'd like to meet at the park on Saturdays at eight or eight thirty, sign up. And then someone could lead that like we do. There's a group of us that meet every Saturday at seven thirty. And it started with a small group and it's just grown and grown and grown. It's organic and not city sponsored, which is a good thing, right? Because then people take it into their own hands. And that may be something to do.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, cause I've met some people that saw the crowd and said, oh, I wish I'd known about that. I would have walked.
Absolutely. So.
That's a good idea.
Maybe inviting people to connect with a signup sheet the next time. And then, then like a sponsor like you or, or, uh, Mr. Laurella could take a group and maybe start something on a Sunday or Saturday and see how it grows. So it's a good way. P C R C, uh, Mr. Boki said much of it, just so the folks know, it was about recommendations to uh, extend urban growth boundaries for certain communities. Uh, you're assigned an urban growth boundary and the county can't really exceed it unless you take away from one area and give to another because your total urban growth boundary has to be a net zero in terms of, you know, expansion or contraction. So there was a lot of give and take. Some in Gig Harbor, some in Bonnie Lake, some in other areas. And it was just, it was a bit cumbersome to say the least. So the end result was most of the discussion got punted to a later date so that we could come back and chat with you if you had any input, which we will do once we get some more information. So we'll circulate that. Uh, last thing I had, I got a call today about the Ardmore Silicon Boulevard, uh, uh, ninety third street project. The comment I got a frantic call was from a person stuck in traffic saying, gee, uh, we would do well by having better traffic control at Ardmore and Silicon Boulevard in the mornings during the traffic timeframe. Because the contractors who are directing traffic were not effective at it as maybe one of our patrol officers might be. So that was the comment, that they were just stuck all the way back to Hipkins trying to get through the intersection there at Ardmore and Silicon Boulevard. It was a mess this morning. That's what I heard. So. Well, and it, the police officers are, you know, traffic cops are really good at getting flow going. And the poor directional control person hired by the contractor, from what I understand, uh, was not perhaps as effective as one of our own could do. So that's all I heard. Okay, so we will now, uh, recess into executive session for about fifteen minutes pursuant to R C W forty two thirty one ten sub one I. To discuss with our legal counsel litigation or potential litigation, we will not take action following that executive session, other to come back and adjourn the meeting. And then after adjournment, we're gonna hold a brief closed session. Uh, but no O P M A requirements apply to the closed session. So, uh, the meeting will be adjourned after the executive session. Uh but no OPMA requirements apply to the closed session, so uh the meeting will be adjourned after the executive session.